Benson and Malga. A lot of unincorporated out in that part of the valley. They're all dependent on this system.
Oh, okay.
And so we're all lumped into.
Yeah, that's in that survey, but I was talking about when they specifically were listing out.
Oh, yeah.
For sewer. The property was not named anywhere.
Oh, for sewer, yeah.
Sewer, it wasn't for the survey.
You folks ready? Hello and welcome, everyone, to the Cache County Planning Commission meeting for August 4th. We appreciate you all coming down tonight. Hopefully, you get a chance to learn a little bit about your local government and how it works. We open our meetings with opening remarks and the pledge, and tonight Commissioner Dawgs would be doing that for us.
I'm going to give my remarks in the form of a prayer. Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have together, together as citizens of the county and the great blessings we have, to work together as citizens on the matters of development and how the county changes and grows over time. Thank you for the opportunity we have to live in this great free nation and all the many blessings that that bestows upon us. And bless us as we go throughout this evening that everyone will be able to have a civil discussion on these matters, and we'll be able to see that the outcomes are to the best outcome for the citizens of the county. And we do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
If y'all stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. So first item is review and approval of the agenda. I don't believe we have any changes to the agenda as posted. Does anybody have any questions or suggestions? If not, without objection, we'll approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. How about review and approval of minutes from our 7th of July meeting? Everybody have a chance to look at those? Anybody see anything we need to request to edit or modify?
I submitted a few thing, minor things that Charlie did.
So Melinda has a few edits that she submitted. Other than that?
And those have been updated.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, then Commissioners, without objection, we'll adopt and approve the minutes of the July 7th meeting. So tonight, we have one consent item and eight regular action items plus some discussion items. So it looks to be a fun-filled evening for us all. On the consent items, just for the folks in the audience to know, we have one item. That's the Rocky Mountain Reindeer Farm CUP. And a consent agenda item meets all the requirements of the county. So we won't be taking any comment or anything like that unless someone is here specifically to comment on that item. So assuming there aren't any, we just wanted to make sure you are all aware. Is there anybody here that would like to make a comment on the consent item number one? Great. So with that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent item agenda. I'm sorry, the consent item for the Rocky Mountain Reindeer Farm CUP. So moved?
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I do have one quick question on that.
Okay.
Per the little discussion prior to this meeting, there was some question on one possible item. Is that something that could be researched for the next meeting?
Well, yeah, I looked it up. There's not a condition on that. It's not in the conditions.
Okay. I just remember, though, that it was discussed, so was that overlooked? Or where did that information come from? You wasn't here for it, was you?
No, I just looked up the conditions.
Mr. Gunnel brought it up, and I remember it being discussed, but it's just kind of a concern if that is a requirement or valid that we account for it. I don't know if that came from the wildlife, if it came from the neighbors. I don't know who that came from.
Tim, you able to check back on that? If it was on whether the waste from the animals needed to be sent to the landfill rather than being composted? There was some discussion on that, and I can't remember how it ended up.
Sorry, we don't have an update on that.
Okay, so.
And I don't think we're in a position to modify the CUP. The request is to extend it for six months in order to meet all the conditions. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Maybe for future reference, staff can check on that and let us know. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second to approve the six-month extension for the Rocky Mountain Reindeer Farm CUP. Any other discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the consent item is approved for the six-month extension. So our first regular action item tonight is the Monticello Meadows subdivision. And we usually begin these discussion, excuse me, these discussions on these items with a staff report. So is that going to be Angie tonight?
It will be, yeah. And typically, our subdivisions are on the consent calendar. This item had just been on our agenda last month as a discussion item because of the road situation, which we did find a resolution, either have the improvements done before or do an in-fee lieu payment that, or an in-lie fee payment, that then the county would come back and do those improvements later. And those are reflected in the conditions of approval. But again, just because it was something that we had discussed last month, I elected not to put it on the consent calendar in case there were any follow-up questions on it. But otherwise, staff is recommending approval with conditions.
Commissioners, any questions about this item? For staff?
I didn't know if it was kind of confusing as far as like conditions five and six, because generally, we ask them to meet all of the conditions. But five and six kind of contradict, you know, we say meet condition five, but then condition six says if you can't meet five, then do this. So I wondered about just labeling them different, more like 5A and 5B or something?
Yeah.
5A or 5B or something like that, because they wouldn't be able to meet both?
That's just a technical thing that doesn't really matter. Have to add some clarity, that's always helpful. Any applicants are here, I don't know if they had any other questions.
Okay, we'll invite them up. Any other questions for staff? Okay, so are the applicants here tonight? You don't have to, but if you'd like to, if you have any questions for staff or Commissioners, you're welcome to come up. Okay. All right, Commissioners, what would you like to do on this one? Maybe would it be worthwhile, Angie, just to have you report on, because there was a lot of questions surrounding the road. And so it sounds like there's an option for the applicant to make the improvements or pay in-lie fee, is that right?
That is correct.
So that's how the road issue was resolved? Does that make sense to everyone? Okay, well, I think we can entertain a motion if you'd like at this time, then. This is not a public hearing. We could ask, is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Ah. That's okay. So this is the Monticello Meadows subdivision. No, I appreciate your, you're flagging us down, because sometimes folks wait until after we've already finished the item before they chime in. So that's helpful. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the Monticello Meadows subdivision with the, based on the 12 conditions and one conclusion.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Commissioners, on this item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the Monticello Meadows subdivision has been approved. Okay, the next item on our agenda, we'll have a public hearing on this item. This is the Smithfield Country Estates rezone. And so we'll also begin this item with staff report, please.
Yeah, actually, Tim Watkins is going to give a little preview just to kind of tie this together with the later discussion of the general plan.
Great, great.
Thank you. So I just wanted to acknowledge this evening that we have rezone applications looking to increase the density or increase the number of developable units on property. We also have later this evening for consideration as a consideration of a general plan update. And one thing that we've shared as staff with applicants when they come for a rezone is that we currently do not have guidance from our current general plan that allows staff to have a basis for providing a recommendation to the planning commission and the council. One thing that we have shared with them is that there's a public process that's been underway for some time, exploring that the current zoning of A-10 is depicted here on the screen. There are some property owners that would like to protect that current density. Others would like to see an increase of that density. And this image represents rezones to RU-5 and RU-2, resulting in a development pattern, as you see here. The general plan encourages, I will say the draft general plan, encourages exploration of cluster development options, transfer development options that allow for some density increase, but as a bonus for, as an incentive to preserve open space and agricultural lands and other sensitive areas. So just wanted to share that that's been shared with applicants in discussing rezone potential is that we don't necessarily have a conclusive recommendation of staff, but we do have this general plan, draft general plan for consideration at this time. So, thank you.
You'll give us the staff report, right, Angie?
Yes. So yes, this is the Smithfield Country Estates rezone request. It's a request to rezone this parcel that's ending in a one. Oh, sorry, I don't have the right screen. There it is. So is this, this parcel here where the arrow is on, 16 and a half acres. The request is to change from the agricultural A-10 zone to the rural two RU-2 zone. The rezone may allow the parcel to be legally divided into a maximum potential of eight lots, at one lot for every two acres, under the RU-2 density requirements. However, it's likely to be, will be less than that due to sensitive areas on the property. That will reduce the net developable acreage. Under the current zone, A-10 allows for a maximum of one buildable lot. So staff has identified some general information as it pertains to the subject property to assist the planning question in County Council of arriving at a decision. First is the kind of surrounding context. Within a, immediately adjacent to the property, I should say, there are eight parcels, none with a home on it, and an average lot size of 16 acres. When we look at a quarter-mile buffer, there are six parcels with a home, an average lot size of 6.3 acres. And then we move out to a half-mile, we start to pick up some parcels in Smithfield City, where there are five parcels with homes and 1.7 acre average, and then 32 parcels with a home in the county with 6.7 acres average size. So as mentioned, the Smithfield City boundary is located within less than a half a mile to the east of the subject property along 800 West. You can see on the map where the purple comes in, that's Smithfield boundary. The properties immediately adjacent to the rezone are primarily used for agriculture. The property is located within the Smithfield City future annexation area. Smithfield City was notified, but we have not received any comments from them. The closest RU-2 zones, and I can just turn on the layer for the zoning so that everybody can kind of see where those are. So we do, so the yellow is all the unincorporated ag zoning in the area. And the subject property is again right here at 1200 West and 5400 North. We do have kind of a cluster of four rezones that were approved over a period between 2017 and 2022. As you can see, those are all immediately adjacent to the Smithfield City boundary. The Birch Hollow was the first that was approved in 2007. They're going through an amendment to add a fifth and final lot. The Jeff West rezone was approved in 2018. A two-lot subdivision with an agriminder was subsequently approved, but there is a potential for three additional building lots under that zone on that property. And then going south here, the Tom Pitcher Lot Split was approved RU-2 zone in 2018 as well. They are currently finalizing their subdivision amendment that will add their fifth and final lot. And then here, the largest development is Creekside Estates, which was originally approved as a 1970 subdivision, so they had a slightly higher density to begin with. But then were approved for a rezone to the RU-2 in 2021. And they are close to recording their subdivision amendment plat that will max out their density at 15 buildable lots. The County Land Use Ordinance identifies the purpose of the RU-2 zone and includes the following, to allow for residential development in a moderately dense pattern that can allow for rural subdivisions, and to allow for clustering plans larger than a single parcel. To implement the policies of Cache County Wide Comprehensive Plan, which again, we're talking about subbing that out tonight or getting into an improved one. And then the zone must be appropriately served by suitable public roads, have access to necessary water and utilities, and adequate provision of public service. So the property here is access, has two access points along 5400 North. And then there is an unimproved road on the western frontage, 1200 West. 5400 North is an existing county facility that provides through access to ag parcels and single-family dwellings. It is classified as a major local road and has a paved width of approximately, or on average, 19 feet. Is considered substandard as to width of travel lanes, right-of-way gravel shoulder width, and the clear zone, but is maintained year-round by the county. Again, 1200 West is just classified as an unimproved road. It's just a two-track road that provides ag access. There are sensitive areas on the property. As mentioned, that will reduce development potential. So there are areas of wetlands that are shown here. And this is actually the updated wetland map from the...
UGS.
Yes, so it does reflect those most recent changes. The applicant did do a preliminary wetland assessment, which is attached as part of your staff report. I believe the reduction in net developable acreage would probably allow a maximum of five or six buildable lots on this parcel. There is also, you can see this purple circle up here, that's a source water protection area. That kind of creeps onto the corner. No septic is allowed in those areas. But other than that, there's plenty of the property that is not located in that zone.
Does the source water protection take away from that density?
No.
Doesn't?
You just can't put septic in there.
Okay.
And what's the source water protection it is for which?
It is for... Can't have the septic.
Inaccessible well?
That Benson or Malga?
Benson used to have a water, have a waterworks right there.
And now it's further west, right?
No, it's just up from like bottom. It's right there, and it's probably barely, it's in that circle. On the road, on the side of the road. So public notice was posted on the Utah Public Notice website and sent out to everyone within 300 feet and Smithfield City. At the time the report was written, I had not received any public comment, but did receive a letter that was added to your shared drive today opposing the application or request due to groundwater conditions and land drains that are located on the property. That's a very brief summary of this four-page letter, but I hope you've had a chance to look at that. Staff has not made a recommendation on this, but we have drafted just some basic conclusions for you to help you come to a decision. And that is on the last page of your staff report there. But that does conclude staff's staff report.
Hey, Angie, to the southwest of this parcel is also a subdivision. But is that, that subdivision there? Is that all?
It doesn't show up in the red patch.
It's all 10-acre lots, I assume?
Or the density.
Part of the 10-acre density, yeah.
Unless they came in, their older one could be one where you just kind of got five lots.
Right.
Automatically, or could have come into the 1970 parcel.
I remember those days. Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Okay, should we motion for an opening of the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion and a second to open the public hearing on the Smithfield Country Estates rezone. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, is the applicant or agent here tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, would you like to come up and ask questions or state your case? Whatever you'd like to do.
Thank you. When I first met Angie and started talking with her, and she's been very helpful through this process, she suggested that with this parcel, I'd need a good argument as to why approving this rezoning application made sense and would be good for the community. And I believe I've done that. Let me first begin by saying that although this is a 16 and a half acre parcel, I'm not asking for maximum density as most developers might. The public notice that went out suggested this, Angie had said that the development could be eight homes, but this parcel has special circumstances. It has 3.55 acres that are sensitive. So the net developable acreage is 2 point, 12.79. My proposal is for five lots of roughly two and a half acres each. And in my proposal, we would retain roughly three and a half acres of pasture in commonly owned open space to preserve some of the property's historical farmland. I've applied for the RU-2 zone instead of the RU-5, asking for special consideration due to these sensitive areas. An RU-5 zone would only permit a total of two lots, which would ultimately be priced out of the range of most people. One of the priorities from the Housing Task Force that I had read anyway is to provide affordable housing options for local residents and for their children. And I believe the best way to meet the housing demand we are facing is with a variety of options for homeowners. There should be options for people who want a little more ground than a sub-acre lot, but can't afford 10 acres. Ranchette-style development, which is what I'm proposing, on the edge of the country but near the city, would be a good location for these type of properties. This type of option is currently in high demand, but not readily available. Another benefit from an RU-2 zone at this location is that it would create a rural farm-like setting to serve as a buffer zone between the higher-density Smithfield residential developments and the wider rural county. Allowing for such a development now at five large estate properties, along with the preservation of a sizable portion of pasture, would set a precedent to keep the surrounding areas in similar future developments versus the potential for high-density expansion of Smithfield City when it comes. This also sets another positive precedent in the use of public instead of private, or in the use of private instead of public funds for the upgrading of 5400 North and the installation of 1200 West, those roadways. Although this request, requested approval is, I'm not asking for a new precedent, because there have been parcels approved that are not contiguous to city boundary. And I have two of those, if anyone wants to mention what they are. I've got the parcel numbers and the locations. But although it's not a new precedent, I think we have to look past old precedents that inhibit reasoned and tasteful progression. We need to address the need for housing in various ways, and not just high-density family or low-density agriculture, but the zones in between. And the RU-2 and the RU-5 were both approved by the county for this purpose. If the preservation of farmland were the only consideration in rezoning decisions, I would not have made this request, nor would I have made it if I were a mile or two away. But the parcel is just .4 miles from the Smith, current Smithfield City boundary, and less than three-quarters of a mile from the new LDS Smithfield Temple. It lies within, as Angie has said, the boundary of the Smithfield Future Annexation Zone, indicating that its expectation is for future residential development. I also wanted to make a couple of comments, and I'll be real brief here, but I did have a chance to read the public comment that came in today, the letter that came in. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments in regards to, in regards to that, kind of addressing some of those concerns. I want to be a good neighbor and work with those who are concerned about development, but I feel I should be able to do what I want with my land as long as it meets the necessary development requirements. Any approval of my application would obviously be contingent on obtaining appropriately issued well and septic permits, and on meeting the necessary road improvements to service traffic, which were a couple of things I know that were mentioned as concerns. When it comes to water, I can't imagine there's a piece of property anywhere in Cache Valley that doesn't have some water flowing underneath it. I investigated the potential for water problems on this parcel before purchasing it. I hired Civil Solutions in Providence to do a thorough wetland survey, a copy of which I submitted with my application. And I trust their professional analysis. Land use, as you know, changes with the times. Smithfield's footprint is expanding, and this parcel has been earmarked for development as it sits within the future annexation zone. I think it would be sensible to lock its future use in now with a limitation of five homes and the preservation of a significant amount of open space versus the potential for 30 or more homes once Smithfield City annexes it. And then the fact that there is so much natural water resource available on this property suggests to me that it could easily service the water needs for five homes without impacting the needs of farmers downstream. As to any potential water or drainage issues, I would ask that the application not be denied for this cause, as these matters would be all reviewed by the county engineer and other appropriate individuals in due course of time before subdivision or permitting. So that's all I've got. If you've got any questions for me?
Yes, state your name. For the record, I've neglected to do my duty and tell you to do that when you started.
It's Mark Ensign.
Okay, thank you. Just, just for me, a quick question. So you had a preliminary wetland assessment done, which is for planning purposes, but would you follow up with a wetland delineation?
That's not my plan.
Approved?
No. It's, I mean, if we, if we needed to, but I intend to leave the wetlands right where they are and preserve those as part of an agricultural setting for this development, so.
Okay.
No. No, we're just looking at developing the roughly 12.7 acres that are developable now.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ensign?
I do have one question.
Yeah.
Pending that, if this was to pass, how would you propose to deal with those land drains?
Well, I'm not personally familiar with the land drains. I know that the fellow who sent the letter today indicates that they are there, but the only thing that I've seen on them is kind of a hand-sketched diagram of his. When we had Cole, let's see, I can't think of his last name. Cole from the survey... When we had Cole, let's see, I can't think of his last name, Cole from the survey company, company come over and do the survey, he spent quite a, quite a few days, and he did not mention to me that there were any drains that he felt needed to be mitigated. So I, you know, if there are, I mean, if that's something the county engineer points out, then we'll obviously deal with it, and we'll deal with it the most effective way we can, but at this point in time, I'm not aware of that.
What are those lines that we're seeing, Angie, on this map that you have up there?
None of these are just other source water protection zones that extend out, but the county code just addresses zone one and two that can't have septic in them.
Civil Solutions was the name of the, the agency I used.
Any other questions? I think, at least based on my knowledge, you know, all of the drain maps in the, in the lower valley are hand drawn, you know, from a long time ago, and if you, if you dig down six, six feet or so, you'll find them, they'll be there. It's been my experience.
The majority of the county is covered in field drains, but yeah, they were put in, many of them over a hundred years ago.
Wow.
If we have a hand drawn map, that's great. Most of them, we may not have that, and that's, that's the tricky part, because with the health department, you can't put a septic system within a hundred feet of one of those.
Right, I know that.
The health department doesn't know where most of them are. So it is a gray area of how those are addressed, and that's not our call, that's the health department's call, but that is one thing.
I have talked with the health department, I've also talked with the Smithfield City, trying to ferret those things out, but I know the county engineer would, would have to relook at the work that Civil Solutions did and sign off on that. And so I feel like the protection is there, and if there are problems, then, then we would obviously have to mitigate them to move forward and receive our permits, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right.
By a show of hands, how many folks would like to come up and speak on this item tonight? Okay, and so maybe half a dozen or so, and so I'm, I'm just asking so we can manage our time best, and, and what we would ask is that as you come up, we'd love for subsequent speakers to highlight things that haven't already been said by the prior speaker as much as possible, so we would appreciate that, and try to keep your comments to three or four minutes would be appreciated as well, since we have quite a few folks that would like to come up and speak. So with that, head on up to the microphone, state your name, and give us your comments.
My name is Mava Pitcher, and this is my daughter Kelly Albert, and I have the property just west.
With the buildings on it?
Yes, the barn, and then her house is the next one down. And we are against this proposed zone. I own about a hundred acres near the proposed zone. My family is very against this change. There will have to be a well drilled by them, and my concern is, we have a flowing well at my barn, and it's just a very short distance from this property. It supplies water to my barn, and the flowing well supplies water to her home. I also own three fourths of the shares of the water known as the Woodruff Tools and Drain on this property, and it comes with all ditches, it's protect, all ditches, ditch rights, easements, hearthment, I don't know if I said that right, and that's on my water rights. We are very concerned as to how this will affect the flow of our well and the ability to water my land that we use for the Woodruff Tools and Drain. This is a very old water right, then passed down, and I'm very concerned on protecting it. There's also, at the end of the road, just down there a little ways, it stops the paved road. We have people that zoom back and forth, go down, and it's very dangerous down there, the bottom of this road. I, I think it could affect the traffic. In winter, it drifts the snow really bad down there, that would be something they'd have to worry about.
And it's not an approved road, I mean, improved road, it's still dirt road.
And, and you've, you've already brought up the protected part of the land, and I just want to say, it's fairly sad that an old farmer dies in just a short time, his land is put up for sale, somebody that has a lot of bucks comes and buys it, and right off, they want to put houses on it. We are running out of farmers, and we're running out of farmland, and I think that they, that this should stay as farmland.
I'll ask one question before you, before you step down there. You talked about the, the name of the canal company, it's the drain, do you take water from the, the field drains? Just we, we brought that, that question up.
Yes, that water, that waters my land, land down the, down the line, down the.
All those, all those pieces, those three pieces that all waters.
And then all the way to that, that road right there.
Yes.
That's, that's my pastures, it, it waters all that, that, that drain is very important.
Field drains in the area, take the water, put it into a canal, and then use.
We put it in the ditches, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pitcher. Don't be shy, come on up, if you'd like to speak on this item, come on up.
I'm going to go left.
You guys can actually come up and sit over here on the side too, so we can keep it rolling.
So my name is Chris Keister. I own the parcel on the very western edge there at fifty four hundred. Two items I'm concerned for me with the addition of this proposed subdivision. I too have an artesian well, free flowing well, and am concerned with the addition of more wells in that general area. He's already addressed the wetlands issue, that was the third one, but my, or second issue, but my third issue is fifty four hundred and twelve hundred. As you stated, they're kind of, they're listed as improved, but not.
Substandard.
Substandard.
Yes.
They are very narrow, says nineteen feet, yeah, nineteen feet with about a three foot crown. They're very much farm roads. As Ms., as Mava stated, right in front of my house, the pavement ends, and I get a number of people turning around, a number of farmers coming up and down, and that's a very tight curve there on fifty four becomes sixteen hundred, increased traffic. At the corner of twelve and fifty four, there isn't even a stop sign or a yield sign at that intersection, and that is actually the intersection where my son catches the bus in the morning. He has to walk down that road, a quarter mile to that corner. There is no light, there is nothing right there. So the addition of additional traffic along fifty four hundred, without any improvements, I think poses a grave issue, so, thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
I'm Greg Darrow, this is Sharice Darrow. We actually own the property directly west and then of Mark, and then directly east of Mava right there. We also own a house and land southwest of there, about three parcels over, so we've been out there. We actually afford this, we don't mind that. The, as far as the water rights, everything that goes through there, we've tried to honor everything on our property as well, we understand that. We don't think that has any bearing on, unless you own that property, that you can do anything with the water. The water will maintain its course, everybody will still have their access to it, that has no bearing on, on the property whatsoever. We personally have taken in a number of animals, horses, cattle, some cattle and stuff, a lot of times for free. We recently just took in more because the cost of actually boarding and everything has been super expensive, so we purchased that land as well to be able to offer at some point homes with more than two acres for the sake of being able to keep your cattle, being able to have, or at least have your farm animal or something like that. There is a need for that out here, and this is not in the area. At some point, yes, I do believe you will have thirty acres on each one of these parcels. We'd rather not have that, we'd.
Thirty homes.
Thirty homes, I'm sorry, but we'd rather have the two and a half, three, four, or the five acre lots are absolutely great. What I can guarantee is on either both of those, well, I don't know about Mark's, I apologize, but on our lot at some point, a house will be built. It's, it's, it's that simple. You can build one right now, so one will be put on there, but if it's partitioned into two, I'd rather have that than thirty. We understand expansion's coming at some point in time, we can't keep it this way. We've also dealt with the water companies, we've dealt with the wetlands on our property and whatnot, and every person that's come out there to give us their assessment or to have to go and fight what's actually on there is some of the aerial photos were taken in nineteen seventy, and that's what it was based off of. So we are doing the work, we are doing the prep behind it. I think, we haven't, we're not planning on doing anything anytime soon, but I know that Mark has, and we've worked closely with him on it. He's talked to us about it only because we are his neighbors. I would hope, and I know that you would do that with everybody else as well, but I can tell you that we support it.
My name is Julie Neeld, and I own ten acres east on fifty four, east of this property, on fifty four hundred north is nine eighty west, and most of my concerns have been addressed. I just realize that it is an emotional issue because open land is important for us to have a sense of space, and I think that will be something that is really critical, that we be able to preserve and hand down to coming generations, even though I realize change is coming, people need places to live. The density, we need to be careful with that. I think that that would be something that we want to be careful with not getting too dense there. My biggest concern on a personal level, and we've already talked about that, is the groundwater, my well. We start drawing more water out for this many more homes, I don't know how that affects my groundwater and my well, and if it's going to be a big expense for me to have to re-drill. But I think that there is a philosophy in our county that we are, Cache County is a farming community, and it's beautiful. I think, yes, we need homes, but open spaces are important, and that should really be something that we take into consideration.
Thank you.
We're the Kimbels, we live directly north of this proposed development, right there, yes. We moved down there twelve years ago. We moved there because it was out of the way, we didn't like living in a city, we didn't like living around a lot of other people. It was very beautiful down there, nice views, and that's why we moved there, that was the reason why we decided to live there, and we felt like that would be protected because at the time, you know, it was ten acres per building lot. And so we figured that that would, that would just be how it would be, you know, and there's other, there's, so that's the main reason why I came today, and that's why I, and I know, I'm just like everybody else here, I, I know that change is inevitable, but I think that, you know, the pristine places of this county should be preserved somewhat because they're kind of disappearing if you haven't noticed. Another, another thing that kind of I was thinking about is, you know, that's down below the sewer line, the sewer line is on the street up above, and so every single home there is going to have to have its own drainage system, and that always affects groundwater. You just can't get away from that. It's, it's going to affect it somewhere or another, and so that's why I'm here, and that's, that's why I disagree with this proposal. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to add that, like my husband said, we just fell in love with the place, and we work and we put everything we have, all the time we could, you know, we could put in to, to live there, you know, and just, we just love the way it is, so, like you said, we just, we don't agree with this.
Thank you. Any other folks would like to make a comment on this? It's your turn, sir.
My name is Robert Gunnel, I've got to ask Nolan which wife he's from after this meeting, so you and I got to talk.
Sounds good.
Okay. I'm going to preface my remarks by saying I'm on the board of directors of Smithfield Irrigation Company, but I'm not here representing their position tonight, just so that that's made very clear. Tuesday, I was getting a haircut from Sharice Darrow, and I was complaining to her about some of the difficulties we've had as an irrigation company, interacting with developers. They seem to know all the rules, and we aren't as well schooled, because many of us are farmers, and anyway, we just don't always deal well, and I was complaining about the difficulties we're having with the development community not, not being concerned about the end user or the person who's going to build that residence. I live about three tenths of a mile to the south of this property. Can we show that on the screen? I live on five thousand north.
Open the chat.
Yeah, you'll notice there's a large drainage through there, it's called the Hopkins Loop Complex, and the one that Mava Pitcher was talking about is part of the Noble Merrill Complex. I'm just going to address two topics, soil type and aquifer. First of all, early in the meeting, you showed some other buildings that had gone on quite close to this area. I can tell you why the building has gone on there. They are built on gravel, they're adjacent to the Summit Creek, and those of us who have farmed in the area for years are aware that, yeah, you don't have difficulty with this water problem. Somebody said every place has a drain in it, it does not. Most of Smithfield does not have drains in it, especially if you get east of eight hundred west, there are only a very few, I can think of one right now, and then of course you got the Chamber Spring Complex. But that being said, as you move to the south, the soil type changes dramatically. Many of us are on a silty clay loam, but there are probably, on a fifty acre parcel, I probably have six different soil types, and they're all pretty heavy. The reason we have artesian wells there is because of the fact that down about four feet, there is an impermeable clay layer that you cannot break through. It'd be difficult for some modern equipment to get through some of these clay layers. So I've always been concerned that when anybody does a perk test for a septic tank, they do it in this time of year, they don't do it in the spring of the year, because I can guarantee you, I know the Nedlow property very well, and you can find water if you dig a fence post hole there in the spring. I'm talking the surface dry, but you go to dig the fence post hole, you'll encounter water. I also am aware of field drains, I have five of them. My daughter and I have a fifty acre. field drains. I have five of them. My daughter and I have a fifty acre parcel. We have five drains and fifty acres. If someone went and tried to develop that entire fifty acres without knowing where they were, it could raise all kinds of havoc because you sever one of those and because of that clay layer, the water comes straight to the top. So the other concern, and I'll make this remark brief, I have personally been at odds with the Division of Water Resources over the fact that they think that you can put, continue to put straws in the bucket and not dry the bucket up. The reason that there are very few artesian wells west of Smithfield anymore is not just because of development. Let me be fair. First of all, we put in a sewer system so we didn't have the drainage water from septic tanks. Secondly, we changed our irrigation practices. All of our irrigation system is in a pipe now. It used to be a ditch system. And as I mentioned, the upper part of Smithfield, east of eight hundred west, is quite gravelly. So we got a lot of percolation when we were flood irrigating and the aquifer would get recharged. I have one of the newer wells and I have a way of monitoring this because my professional work is in agricultural research. And I've met with a state water engineer and discussed with him the fact that we can monitor, and I can show you right today, the reduction in the amount of water in the aquifer based on a tap that I have inside my home and a little gauge that I can put on it. And it sometimes goes dry. That never happened before. Our problem is that we are in a twenty-year drought. And our other problem is that we need to convince the state of Utah and the Division of Natural Resources that we cannot continue to punch more holes. When you see that huge monster that Smithfield drilled last year, they turned it on for a few days and dried up springs west of town. It's an interesting complex. And you put that aquifer depletion and the soil type that they're proposing putting this on together, and I have to be, even though I am dear friends with these folks, I have to express the fact that I'm against this proposal. I'd like to clarify one more thing, and I hope this isn't embarrassing to the Darrells. So Sharice, when I talked to you, I knew nothing.
Well, I'm not a developer or farmer myself.
I knew nothing about this. So I go to irrigation meetings the same dang night and they tell me that the Darrells and Mark Enzine are actually co-developers on this property. I don't know if that makes a difference, but would that make a difference in your support of this?
I understand what you're saying.
Is that a none of our-
If the city were to come out here and put you on-
So hang on, folks. Let me just say-
I'm finished.
Please direct your comments to the commission and not to the audience.
Well-
We appreciate it.
He's my neighbor in Long Beach.
We are, we are so close, it's disgusting.
Hey, you better be careful though with your barber.
Well, I'm glad I got my haircut before this discussion. I don't know. Does anybody have any further questions for me? I'll sit down.
No. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else this evening?
I'm Lisa Peterson. I'm neighbors with, this is my father, Robert Gunnel, and I am adamantly opposed to this. And I think we've felt some emotion in the room tonight because it is frustrating that these are people that have worked this land for generations, families passing down. And I know there was an offer on this ground for twice its value by a local farmer, and it couldn't compete with somebody coming in to develop. But I think you see the uniqueness. It's very rare that you find this much acreage where people are really trying to hold on to it. And I know we're concerned about housing. I'm very, you know, I have kids that we're trying to find places for. I can tell you, these people would give up small sections of unfarmable ground to accommodate housing. But when we talk about a system that's so, if you go out and look at this piece of ground, you'll realize you can't take the center of this place and plop something like that in there. One of my big concerns, and we've already seen it, because there's so much agglon land out there. We have the narrow roads. We have a lot of farm equipment. And as we've seen development coming, a lot of really high-speed traffic, a lot of dangerous situations because you've just got a high mix of that on these roads out there now. So that's a concern. As far as the water, the well I'm currently on, and I, and I will comment that I was able to build my home about four years ago on a six acre parcel. And I'm very grateful that I was able to come here and continue to support the farming operation. But my well is over a hundred years old. My grandfather put that well in. And my parents' well went dry last year when Smithfield City started to do their little test. So I walked out. It's had artesian pressure over a hundred years. I walked out and turned my pump off. I had no artesian pressure for the first time in over a hundred years. So we do have a water table that's dropping out there and we do have to be very conscientious of that. And I have to admit that I am probably one of the few people in this room that when the Smithfield Temple was announced, there was a little me, a little bit of me that went, oh, no, because I knew that this was coming. When they announced that Temple was going in the Westfields, I knew what would be next. That's neither here nor there. But there's a lot of folks out there that have fought to preserve this. They continue to preserve it. Their children are ready to help preserve it. And I just really think a lot more has to be looked at before you even consider taking a vote on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else tonight would like to comment on this? Okay, commissioners, just a reminder to everyone in the audience, if you haven't already, on your way out, please sign into the roll here so we have an accurate record of folks that were here. We would really appreciate that. What would you like to do, commissioners? Can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now what would you like to do, commissioners?
I am torn on all of these, I mean, these close ones that we have that are sort of close. You know, I live in Hyde Park City and so, and helped with the planning there. And you think of like a two acre lot, which is small in the county. And, you know, we can approve it because it's close to that city. And yet, when it's annexed into Smithfield City, that's a large parcel. So I get torn on, on sizes. I, I love the, the idea of it being more of a cluster development. I don't know if, how familiar the owner is with kind of those presentations that Tim Watkins did before, what the general plan could provide better direction on. I probably lean toward waiting for the general plan.
I'm torn also.
Yeah.
Because the same, you know, as, as Smithfield grows and they want, you know, in their annexation plan, they, they anticipate that ten acres probably having twenty or thirty homes on in their, in their thing. But as to Mark's comment, there are a lot of people in the valley that maybe grew up on a farm and either came back to the valley to live now or, or moving out and want a little acreage to have their horse or their cow or whatever on their lot. So the cluster development doesn't work for those people. And if you want to look right now in the county for a two and a half acre lot, they're not easy to find. And part of that is cost, right? The cost of the developer. If you can, if you can be in a city, you don't want to sell a two and a half acre lot because you can put twenty homes on that. If you're too far in the county, you can't do that. You've got to sell a ten acre lot. If you're just close enough, you can do a five acre or maybe a two acre, depending on the zone. So it is, it is a tough road to go down. I'm not sure where to go on, but I, I see both sides certainly out there. And I think it fits either way, whether we decide to move it forward to the county council or not. There's, there's some obstacles they're going to have to overcome with, with potential drains there. And that may change some of where the homes have to sit. But I think some of that can be mitigated when they do their research on that. It's just whether it's point four miles, close enough to development to, but there's others that aren't adjacent to a city. I think in short order, that Temple coming, unfortunately, some areas are going to change. There's two ways we can stop that. One is a landowner can refuse to ever sell, right? A farmer can say, I'm never going to subdivide my ground. And they can even put covenants on that and deed restrictions so their kids and grandkids can't do that. But that's very cost restrictive to their generations down the road. Or they can look to put that in a conservation easement and seal that up. But for, for us as a population to just say, landowner X should give up his development rights because we like open space, I don't think is very fair to landowner X. This is, this, this parcel is in the gray area. Does it fit or does it not? I could go either way on it pretty, pretty easily, I think.
I'm, I'm less torn on this than, than my colleagues here. I, I looked at this one and I, and I thought, I don't think it's time for this one yet. I, I believe there, there are many, many challenges with this proposal. I look at the, the potential of putting up to eight septic systems. I mean, you just look at the general area there, this is wet, this is a wet area. And we've got, we've got multiple water courses going from this area. I feel there are a lot of challenges here. And probably the, the bigger concern, you know, we always have the challenge of where the RU2 go. And I think we've been fairly consistent in recent, in recent times in, in where we place those. And this seems, excuse me, relatively close, but in the grand scheme of things, I, I think this one is a, is, would be a big blinking neon sign to, to push development way west. And, and so I think this has many challenges for me to support.
Thank you. Lane, how do you feel?
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm on the same side of, I think if, if we're going to get development this far, that I think those developers and landowners just need to petition the city to annex those areas and bring them sewer and water. I currently live surrounded by city on three sides. And I have an artesian flowing well that feeds all of several family farm houses that have been there for generations. And these developments around it haven't affected that yet, but as they came in, the city annexed them. And sometimes they went down a road and then they took this side, then they jumped across and took that side. But it was low in city and they had the capacity to take, to add water and sewer. And so those huge developments around me now, hundreds and hundreds of homes, all in the last fifteen years. And so far, our open space is still there. But when the city came and annexed those properties, then it allowed for that to take place and not destroy that nucleus of open space. So I think that it isn't time for this. I think if they can, if the property owners can get together and, and get the city to annex that and help pay for that with sewer pump stations, which those developers below us have done, developers came in, put in some big pumping stations and allowed for a lot of development. But they had to come with cash to do that. So I think that has to happen in this area. We've talked about it. We've had multiple of these other zones that are, other petitions that have come in for subdivisions. And we've been able to work that because it was right next to the city limits. But I, I would have to vote on this one to deny this right now.
Brady, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are in line with Jason and Lane. I'm concerned about the proximity from the city boundaries based off our fairly consistency over the last number of years. This is on the larger side of the number of homes. I, I wouldn't have a problem if it was a couple or it'd be worth considering. But the volume of homes, the distance from the city boundary, and then the surrounding uses, it just, I don't think it fits. Last month, we had the property in a comparable area such as this. They tried for an RU5. They already were guaranteed, however many lots, they would have gained two more with the RU5 and that was turned down. So I would, I would have to say I side with keeping this area the way it is for the time being.
Similarly, I think I struggle with this one. It's, it's getting to that scale where I think we've, we've been pretty consistent. I do see what's coming, but there, there are quite a few challenges with this one. It's not, it's not a typical lot split or something like that that we see out in the rural areas of the county. So with that, I think we've all shared our, our thoughts and feelings. Would somebody like to make a motion, one way or the other, on this? Staff has prepared two options for us that you can refer to, one for recommendation of approval, one for recommendation of denial. So feel free to chime in when you're ready. And of course, this is a recommendation to the county council. It does not mean that our decision is final, as they have final decision making. So this will go to the county council regardless.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
I would move that we recommend to the county council denial of the Smithfield Country Estates rezone based off of the four conclusions presented by staff at this time.
I'll second that. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion, commissioners? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to recommend denial based on the four conclusions to the county council, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So the recommendation is for denial to the county council and this will be on their agenda accordingly. And so whether you're pro or con, be sure to show up and give the county elected officials your opinions. Thank you for coming out.
And it will be?
Staff?
Um-
It will probably be August twenty-
Actually, I think the applicant was going to be out of town, so we're going to bump it. And the hearing will probably be on the twenty-seventh with the, set of the hearing on the thirteenth.
I was going to say it has, because the next one is the ninth, so we can't make it for that, so.
Okay. But check, check the website for the agendas, just to make sure. Yeah, thank you. Okay, commissioners, our next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the Campbell rezone. And we'll begin with a staff report on that, please.
Yes. So this is a request to rezone ten acres from the agricultural RU10 zone to the rural RU2 zone. It would be, allow, the parcel will be legally divided into maximum potential of five separate lots. And the current zone would only allow for one buildable lot. In looking at, oops, sorry, the surrounding context of the property, the property is outlined in yellow there in the blue section. There are eight parcels without a home on an average nine acre lot size. When we go out to a quarter acre to the orange, there are sixteen parcels with a home, an average lot size of three point six acres, and twenty-five parcels without a home and thirteen acres, average lot size. Then when we go to a half-mile buffer, we start extending into Mendon city boundaries. And there are fifty parcels in an incorporated county with a home. And there are 50 parcels in unincorporated county with a home, at 3.4 acres average. And in Mendon City, there are five parcels with a home with 2.9 acre average. Adjacent uses to the property are primarily agricultural with a few single family dwellings. As mentioned, the closest city boundary is about half mile, or actually, less than half mile to the north of the subject property. If we can zoom out, you can see Mendon's in the green, the subject property is here. It is located within Mendon City future annexation area. The city was notified but has not provided a written comment to staff at this time. We go back to the surrounding context image. The nearest RU2 zones are actually right here in the unincorporated area that is immediately adjacent to the Mendon City boundary. There are three along this road, 2000 South, that have been approved over time. We have the Mountain View Meadows rezone, which was on 6.3 acres here on the corner. That was approved in 2018 and subsequently, a three lot subdivision was approved there. The Christie rezone was immediately adjacent to that on this property. That RU2 zone was approved, it would allow one additional lot. But so far, there has not been a subdivision submitted for that application, or for that property. The other RU2 rezone is on this triangular piece that was just recently approved for a rezone to the RU2 this year on seven acres. And will have a maximum potential of three lots. So we've talked about the purpose of the RU2 and how that could be changing with the general plan that is pending. Access to this property is by 5400 West County Road. And it also fronts a future county road on the north side, Red Fox Lane, or 2200 South. Currently doesn't exist and has a substandard right of way width of just 31 feet. 5400 West is an existing county facility that provides through access from Mendon Road to 2400 South and then connects to Highway 23. Is paved and has a width of 23 feet and is classified as a minor collector road. It is considered substandard as to the standards of the major local road standard, which is what a developer is held to for future development. It is substandard as to right of way paved and gravel shoulder width. It is maintained by the county. It was properly noticed. I have not received any public comment on this, written or otherwise. Staff has also not made a recommendation on this rezone request. It has provided some general conclusions that you can use to help coming to your decision. But that does conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions for staff commissioners on this one?
Just on the, on that road, the Red Fox, you say it is a, a future county road that's just on the...
Master road plan?
On the long-term planning or...
I think any future subdivision would actually have to improve that road and build it because of the classification of 5400 West as a collector. There's not enough, not enough frontage for the spacing requirements. And so, and I believe it's the applicant's intent to construct that road. And so by doing that road dedication in that there, they will go below 10. So the actual potential development on this property is really four lots, not five.
Okay.
Get down to the...
Angie, so 5400 though, is substandard or is it not?
It's substandard as to right of way and then the shoulders, but otherwise it's about 23 feet.
At 23 feet, but they do consider it substandard, so that road would have to also be improved?
Uh, yes, would have to meet a major local road, even though it's a minor collector, so.
And it's chip, yeah, it's chip sealed at least now. It's got a dotted line on it.
Other questions, commissioners, for staff? Okay, now would be a good time for a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing for the Campbell rezone.
Motion and second to open the public hearing. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so just like the last one, we'll have the proponent come up and state their name and give us your input, please.
Hello, I'm Donna Campbell. And my family has, this is fifth generation property for me. And my family has owned and loved this property in that area for many years, over 100. And the next generation is wanting to come to the area. And we are very mindful of the fact that Mendon is considering annexation. I live very nearby and I don't wish to see 58 acre lots. And I feel like it's very appropriate to consider an R2 there. And I would do what was necessary with roads. Yes, I'm interested in access off of 5400. But if necessary, the county road would have to be considered. But I feel like it could easily accept an R2. I know to the north, the south, the east and the west of me, as you were looking, there are one acre parcels. There are very recent approval of two acre parcels. There are, on the property that I live on, that's just a little further south, I have 1.5 acre parcels in front of me. And I know what's coming. And I, I feel like that I would care very badly to appropriately develop it so that it's beautiful. And I own water rights to it, secondary water rights. And it, it matters very much to me that it's done appropriately and well. Do you have any questions for me? I'll keep it brief.
Okay, I don't think so. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on the Campbell rezone tonight? Okay, commissioners, doesn't look like it.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion and second to close the public hearing on the Campbell rezone. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
I did.
You bet. Okay, commissioners, this one has some differences from the last one, I think. What do you guys think?
Really, the only difference I see is the, is the wetland issues that aren't involved with this. Still not contiguous with the city or other RU2s. For those of you who know this, it's pretty similar, other than some potential wetland issues this one doesn't have.
For me, it felt really similar, too. As I'm looking at it now, there are those lots that are approved to the west that are more dense.
Up above.
Yeah, they're above 30, 23.
Is it cobblestone? It goes back there?
Cobblestone is, is west of me, way up.
Above the canal, those are all cobblestones.
That's in the city.
Yeah, these up here.
Isn't it? Is that in the city? Yes. Isn't it? No, it's county.
I guess I'll just chime in while there's, while there's an opening here. I, I think this one is, is similar, just as, as you pointed out, minus the, minus the wetland issues and, and the drainage issues. However, we do in Mendon have that major concern of, of septic in that area where the city doesn't have, it doesn't have sewer system here. And so we're, and so we have a pretty significant amount of that. I guess I look at this one and go, "We're stretching the, we're stretching the distance on all of these." And I'll go back to my, my blinking neon sign with an RU2. Are we, are we just going to start leapfrogging and, and backfilling on this? And, and so while this one maybe makes a little more sense, I think just for sake of consistency, I, I'm gonna stick with, with the way I've gone on, on the previous proposal.
Angie, do, do either of Mendon's wells, do they have a...
Source water.
Source protection area around those? There's two wells along the highway.
There's an Artesian well in this property.
The east, the city has their two big city wells. I just wondered if they even had a...
These are those source water protection areas here and here, but the subject property is right here. Mendon has a sewer system or not?
No. And that, and that north well is the one that had the nitrate problems a few years ago.
Yeah, I think this is like the other one. I think the instruction of the council in creating the R2 was to, you know, with an idea that they're closer to a city limit that could later be annexed. And, but I think the, this is too, too far out for an R2, RU2. I think that's stretching it for what Mendon has done in the past. And I would have to be against this, I think.
Just thinking back, I'm agreeing with Lane, but thinking back, we have recently approved a couple RU2s, but they were right against the Mendon city boundary. And they were like two lots. This here would give us five. We're still leapfrogging, frogging a number of parcels and personally, I don't, I'm not ready yet.
Thank you for that. I think, you know, I, I don't have different concerns than the ones that have been raised. It does sound like this, this is gonna end up being four lots, which is, you know, not, not terribly too many. But nonetheless, it's, it's certainly more than, than some of these other rezones that we've done nearby. So with that, commissioners, what would you like to do? We do have guidance here for a recommendation of approval or a recommendation of denial. If someone would like to make a motion.
Commissioner, I will make a recommendation of denial of the Campbell, Campbell rezone based on the planning commission's conclusions. Three conclusions there.
And that's a recommendation to the county council.
I second the motion.
Who wants to take the credit for that one?
I will take the credit.
Jason, seconds. So we have a motion and second to recommend denial to the county council for the Campbell rezone based on the three conclusions. Any further discussion, commissioners? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the recommendation goes to the county council? Please take the time to make your points with them and, and we wish you luck. Thank you.
Just have a scheduled hearing for 6:30 on the general plan. Maybe we could address how, how to adapt our agenda to the time on hand. Taylor, if you'd like to share some thoughts there.
What do you guys think?
I think those... We could poll the, poll the audience and see how many are here for the general plan discussion. We also have...
I think that's a good point.
Providence here that has been waiting for, for a while.
Yeah, yeah, that's... I don't disagree.
That should go quick.
Yeah, I would think so, too.
Providence City will go quick.
Yeah. Is there anyone here to speak on the general plan, item number seven, tonight?
We know you're here.
You might stick around, it's fun, but you're not planning on giving your input. Okay, thank you. With that, commissioners, it sounds like we want to stick with the agenda as we have it. And let's move through these next few accordingly. So thank you for that, Tim. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the Providence City Cemetery Expansion CUP. And we'll take a staff report on that.
Yeah, and as discussed, I think this will be pretty straightforward. Providence City expansion of their cemetery is a request to expand that. It would be in the same property location. They were just developing more acreage for burial sites and then want to build a structure for storage of equipment and that used for burial purposes. This is a legal non-conforming use, the current cemetery. And typically, legal non-conforming uses cannot be expanded if they're no longer allowed in the current zone. However, here, the cemetery is still in allowed use in the A-10. I think it just predated any original CUP requirements. Although there was a CUP amendment done in 1999 to construct a restroom facility and office space. But that's why it is here, just as a procedural issue, because it is a, a CUP use that needs, is requesting expansion. The subject property is legal. And one of the conditions is a portion of the property, you can see, is kind of across the street here. Just this little itty bitty piece that's also within the River Heights municipal boundary. A condition of approval we have listed is just that they would kind of, Providence City owns a couple of other properties right here. So it would be good to get it cleaned up and just merge it with one of those. But I believe the applicant would prefer we just leave it as is. But I will let you discuss that with the applicant. Yeah, again, it's fairly manger expansion. Again, not adding additional acreage to what's already there, just adding a new structure and some driveways and burial area. With that, access is from 1000 East. It's a county road classified as a major collector, which serves as a link from River Heights to Providence. It is fully developed with curb, gutter and sidewalk right now. The major road improvements to the roads and access were previously constructed and they do meet county standards. So the county engineer did not identify any impacts, conditions or concerns with the proposed expansion. So there are no roadway improvements required. With that, we did not receive any public comment regarding this. And we sent out quite a few notices, I will say, having folded them and stuffed all the envelopes, but no comments. And then the applicant did provide a letter from River Heights City since they join, have an adjoining boundary, but they did not have any issues with it either. So with that, staff is recommending approval with the conditions listed, but knowing that the applicant would like to discuss condition number two. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, please?
Yeah, I have a question on E13. Talking about the road 1900 North and 7200 West.
It's a nervous, uh, they corrected it in the last week.
Oh, yeah, I did update that, didn't I? Okay, all right. I'm looking at an old one then. I thought I had moved it down. I am just thrown off, okay. No, that's, that's all I had. Yeah, I apologize. I do have the revised staff report on our website. Okay, I probably didn't download anything since then. Okay, all right. But it has been resolved.
Angie, could I just clarify in here? The Providence, Providence municipal boundaries are, do not come in contact with this?
No. As we kind of zoom out here, you'll see the boundaries. Here's the cemetery with River Heights to the west and south and then...
And north.
North, south, east and west.
Why don't we just change the name to the River Heights Cemetery?
I think there's some strong feelings about that. Other questions? Okay, shall we hear from the proponent then? Okay, come on up, please. Feel free to chime in on any of the conditions or questions that may have been raised and let us know.
Sure, first of all, you have heard several...
You have to state your name first.
Yes, sorry. My name is Ryan Snow. I'm the city manager of Providence City.
Thank you.
And you have heard, you've heard tonight by a few people that have talked about how long they've had their property. This property has been operated continuously by the city of Providence for over 150 years. This predates your land use authority. The county was a teenager when this property was first put as a, as a cemetery. We don't believe that the conditions should be established for the use, continuous use of a property that has continued to be used in the same manner for over 150 years. We take exception to any of the conditions listed by the staff because it has been grandfathered to that extent and has continuously been, been used as a cemetery and nothing else. as a cemetery and nothing else. The reason why the different piece of, uh, of the cemetery is, is separated, um, by the, uh, by that is because this, the city of Providence allowed the county to build a road over top of that piece of property. It was part of the original piece of the cemetery property. At that point, it will take us months to be able to go through the county process. We visited with the county. They'd require an appraisal, a legal description, um, or a, uh, a survey, a legal description created and, uh, and to attach that. I don't see how it benefits the county at all to, uh, to require the separation. Then it was originally part of this parcel. I don't see any benefit. Some of the other conditions are the conditions that will continue to operate as we said we'd operate. We've continued to operate it as we've said we'd operate it for a hundred and fifty years.
Can you clarify one more time? So what I'm understanding you saying there is you've looked into this. The county's told you, you gotta do these many things. Is that what you're saying?
The three things on the, on the staff report that they're recommending tonight, three conditions?
Are you opposed to those or?
Uh, opposed to all conditions. This, this property has been continuously used as it's, I mean, at this point, we'd, we'd get a building permit, but we applied for a building permit, uh, for this property previous to this. So we've already applied or, or went through an application process for a building permit.
But even though you're a city, why should you not have to do what somebody else has to do?
Uh, it's not that we're a city and we don't have to do it. It's because the land has been continuously used and is grandfathered into its use. It's not that it's a city. Don't, don't get me wrong. It's not that it's a city. We have to follow the county rules. But this has been continuously used as a cemetery for a hundred and fifty years.
Aren't really one and three moot and it's the two that's the issue on the conditions?
One and, one and three are moot.
Doubt is what's just-
One and three are moot and two is, is-
Yeah, two's the obstacle right now. One, one and three are moot because you're doing it.
Right. We're gonna do it anyway. But, but why require the separation from the parcel? So we would request approval of the, uh, application, uh, without the conditions.
Well, the whole parcel's fourteen point seven one acres.
Correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
But it's all one parcel?
That's correct.
So how much?
There's the two little pieces on the south side of the road there.
And what are they, what are they sized wise?
Well, you can measure it on the GIS, but they're not, we don't have a legal description to size that because it's part of the original parcel. It's just the one. Nope. If you'll come over that one at the-
That one.
So we can measure it for GIS as accurate as it is.
So it's small enough that nothing can go there by city standards, right?
It just has split jurisdiction to make a difference about the property. Is in River Heights and sort of it's-
River Heights has supported our application without question and they, they surround it by all sides.
The other thing I'll just point out here is Providence City does own a couple of these small parcels immediately adjacent. It could be an issue just to compare.
That, that old five, which is the east parcel, those two square ways, point one seven acres. So your maximum point three acres, if not less.
Right. It, it's a matter of, of going through and having a requirement that we have to go through and, and survey the property, go through the process of a sub, of dividing that piece off for what benefit to the county.
What is the, what are the cities' future plan for those small parcels?
At this point, they, it's been maintained for the, for that. Now, those two, we have had somebody come and, and, uh, you know, consider making a, a purchase of those, but we haven't determined them as surplus property. Uh, there's, there's currently no plan for any construction or building. If we did, if there was a building that needed to go, it'd come.
The cemetery on that side of the-
No. It's a hill, it's a hillside. It's a, it's a slope. There's nothing that can go there. It, it, it's a procedural step that I think is necessary that will delay us months in the, in the construction of a, of a building that we're looking to put, um, equipment that would be allowed in an A-ten zone. It's, it'll, it would be allowed in an A-ten zone if we were a farmer coming and applying for this building. We would have gone through a zoning clearance for this building and not had to come through a plant, through a conditional use permit at all.
Well, yes, agricultural buildings are exempt from the building permit process and are permitted use with the zoning clearance approval. Uh, but a use type cemetery does have different requirements. I would just like to point out that I have a feeling with, when this is recorded with the recorder's office, um, the new recorder has been, if there is a road that, uh, goes through a parcel that has the same parcel number, they have been automatically assigning them a new parcel number anyway. So it may be just done as part of the, uh, recording of the CUP process.
They record that. They can take that as a boundary, right?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure exactly how they do it, but yeah, if there is a dedicated right of way that goes through the middle of, of first of that same, they will now, as just a matter of course, change that number.
County recorder wants to do that. That's fine with them. But I don't know that how it benefits the, the planning commissioner or the, or the city of Providence at this point.
We're, we're, it's, it's nobody's benefit. We're, we're just here to make sure the rules are enforced and everybody follows the rules. That's all.
Absolutely. We want to follow the rules. Absolutely.
The reason I-
Those two, just for my clarification here, are those two parcels, uh, included because they're, because they're listed separately? Are they being listed in this conditional use permit?
By legal description, uh, yes, they would.
The, the west one ties with the one across the street. The east one's a separate.
It's part of the same parcel. That, that one was part of the same parcel.
They're the same parcel number. Yeah.
Fourteen. Yeah, if you click on one, they're both highlighted.
I, I would make a recommendation on condition number two to either take it out altogether or add to it that the city fixes that if it's not automatically assigned a new number at recording. If they're gonna sign a new number, there's no need for them to go through all that. If the county recorder will just do it as happenstance, if it really needs a different one. I don't, I guess that, that would be the staff of why.
Well, again, it's in a jur, different jurisdiction. So that portion is not in the county at all. Um, so it makes sense for it to have a different parcel number. It so does. And then, yeah, it would be, if we change the condition to have them provide a legal description to take that out of the full legal description of that property, that might take some time for the applicant to prepare as well. But I, I think definitely if we can communicate with the recorder and they're gonna do it as a matter of the process anyways, then that should be-
I, I contacted the recorder. They told me I'd have to get a legal description to have it separated. I, I've been there. Uh, um, at, at this point, if, if you need it separated, then we would ask that you modify the condition to have it at the time of condition of, uh, certificate of occupancy rather than before the permit.
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So the whole reason you're here is because the cemetery currently sits in the county.
That's correct.
Why don't you guys annex it into your city?
They don't own any, the ground tells us.
Because we're not contiguous. And it has, because we're not contiguous. We, we don't touch it.
So we have an, we have an island of county.
To do it.
Okay. So we're saying that road, Dan, the fact that you got that little point one seven acre, or that point one seven piece across the road, the road negates that you're contiguous?
Uh, no, that's River Heights.
It's Providence.
No, that's a great question, but that's River Heights and Providence is farther to south.
Oh.
We're, we're in the next area down.
A hundred and fifty years ago, they made a mistake on where they-
I don't, I don't know what the, what the decision of why they chose the location they did. I don't know those decisions.
Easy digging is where they went.
Easy digging.
Very well could have been.
Where the wind blows. Exactly.
When did you discuss with the recorder's office the process for?
Well, I, I called after I got the staff report from Angie. I called the, the recorder's office to ask what that process would be so that we could be, yeah, absolutely. Within the last couple of days, Angie, you sent it two or three days ago? So within that period of time, after I got that, I called. That's the, that's the reason I've asked and, and kind of requested that, that come back off so we can continue to proceed.
See, you guys, you guys thought this was gonna be-
It was gonna, we were gonna sail through.
Fly right on through. No problem.
Ninety days.
I have to, I have to keep asking clarifying questions. So-
Please do.
That parcel is in the, is in the county. Um, i- is River Heights City amenable to annex those parcels on that side of the road?
Those two little ones are in River Heights.
They're in River Heights.
They're in River Heights.
They've been annexed in the River Heights.
The problem.
That's what staff says is the problem is they're the same parcel.
The separation. Okay, I'm understanding.
My whole problem was I missed to start with that we're in River Heights. I'm sorry.
No, if it was contiguous, that would be, that would be an easy one. I'm sorry. That, that would be an easy one for us. Yes, we would, we'd love to, but it's not our option.
Yes, sir.
I just asked legal and it seems to me, as we've talked about things before, when you talk about a boundary on a parcel, you got a natural boundary and a road meets the definition of a natural boundary. So it would seem easy to give that a new parcel number. It's just if we can get that in number two in some fashion that meets what we gotta meet for being, as Chris said, following the cross your Ts, dot your Is type stuff and getting you guys going to.
If it's something you need, then I would just ask that it be at, at certificate of occupancy at the end of, before we get into the building so that we can start working on the building. Not a hard one. You get what you want. We'll, we'll do it if that's what you need us to do. We don't, there's not a pressing need for us, but if it's a need for you, then that's a, that's an easy one. Gives us time.
Trying to help, but we can't step over something that's just like what has been mentioned here before. If, if it's gotta be done, it's gotta be done, even though we can see the senseless of it or whatever, but, um-
We make a number of homes do it when they do a subdivision split. They have to do it.
We gotta follow that. And now if staff or if legal gives us any help on that, I mean, there's some things we can consider.
I mean, if you did change it to prior to occupancy, the conditional use permit would be recorded first. Um, so it might trigger that the recorder would do that already, but unfortunately that legal description would still be included as part of that recorded document. So it just gets a little messy, um, unless we can just confirm with him that that would happen. Cause like I said, the, the conversation that Mr. Snow is talking about with the recorder versus what we've been discussing with him within the last couple of weeks is different. It's not consistent. So, um, so it might get some clarity.
Rideaways dedicated.
Right.
So if there was some right of way dedication, then that's a, the new understanding in the recorder's office that that triggers a new parcel number. But I'm not sure if there's no parcel, dedication of the parcel to right of way if, if it triggers a new parcel number.
Well, I think when they look at things like warranty deeds or deed of trust where there's a change of ownership, they automatically look at that and if they see that there is a current dedicated right of way, that they will make that.
Such as an increase of the intensity of the use?
Uh, no, they'll just make sure that, so they're being more reactive rather than proactive. So as they get deeds in on these parcels that are split by a road or something, at that time, they will make that change and assign it a new parcel number.
If the county recorder will do it, then there's no reason for the condition. If they're gonna, if they're gonna do it as a process of their, of their process.
Well, then we would need a legal description of that section so we can take it out of the CUP boundary. Cause otherwise the current legal description of the property includes that.
And I would agree with that on the legal description because that would have a big containment on that.
I would hope, but I would hope you could get that legal description without having to do an appraisal on it.
We'd have to do a survey on it. Cause we have no other means of, of getting a legal description for, for a piece of property that is a remainder piece that, that is, is still part of its, part of its original parcel.
That's, that's pretty easy, though. Uh, you probably, if you don't have a surveyor on staff, you probably have a consultant that can do that for you pretty quickly.
I visited with him and we're months out.
Months out? You've got the wrong consultant.
Welcome to come to us.
Counsel, I mean, you know, we're, we're trying to follow the rules here. Do you see any wiggle room on number two there?
I think like Angie said, the hard part is that they record the CUP and if it's not fixed then, then it's recorded with the law, wrong description. Then you almost have to come back for an amendment to the CUP and record it again if we don't fix it to start with.
Is there an issue at time of, of changing that at time of occupancy?
Um, I'd have to-
Does that start a precedent that is, is a problem for us? I mean, we're, we've been really consistent on-
Yeah. Well, the, the way that the, the process works is the permit usually has to be reported first, the conditional use permit. Then you get your zoning clearance. Then you get your building permit. So that's why it complicates it to do it at occupancy.
That's why I asked the question.
But it's already gone through one conditional use permit with it there previously in the ninety-nine, cause it was there and it's been there.
That was a long time.
The eighteen hundreds.
That was really a long time.
In this case, two wrongs may not make a right, so.
Uh, it, would argue, though, it still is grandfathered in and it has grandfathered rights to this property. And your attorney should, should, um, respect those grandfathered rights that this property has. It has not changed its use. It has not changed its, it 's use in this piece of property in that long.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not whether or not I respect it. It's not my decision, but I, I would have to do some research. I mean, especially if we're talking about it's, um, been issued a new parcel number and it's been issued a new, um, it's been separated off from the main property. I, I'd have to do some research to be sure.
This has never been separated off from the original parcel, right?
Table it for thirty days. I don't see any other option either than to go with what we've got or to give it thirty days and you guys allow yourselves time to work through it and see what you can do. Otherwise, we gotta go with what we have. So which is most beneficial to you?
Well, at least if you approve it as it is, I can at least work to, within thirty days. I got a thirty day window to, to help-
Yes, sir.
Get a survey. I, or, or file an appeal with whoever, whoever the appeal authority is. I have no idea. I, I guess that's my option. If you think you have to. I've made my case and whatever you decide is what we'll do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I would defer to counsel. These are, you know, to me, this, these are legal questions, like what, what needs to happen. As a layperson, I just follow the rules and the, you know, the staff has pointed out what the rules are. And so that's how I feel about it.
I, I'll just bring up a, an opinion on this. I think we have many situations similar to this. Maybe not, yeah, probably many throughout the, throughout the county, um, that, well, this is, you know, a cemetery. There are many parcels out there that may have multiple homes on them that were constructed prior to, um, any zoning, any land use authority that are on the same parcel. And for any of those homes to be, you know, split off as a, you know, they're existing. They've been there long before the land use authority. Um, then we're gonna be imposing-
Surveys.
Surveys, um, appraisals.
If I could just interject. So, I mean, there is a cutoff. So, um, any parcel recorded prior to two thousand and six is presumed to be a legal conforming parcel and is grandfathered in. The complication arises when you start to subdivide any of those parcels or change those legal descriptions of the parcels because then that triggers the renewed, if it changes, then it has to meet the renewed, the new, um, most updated requirements. And so, um, that's, so that's what happens with, you know, if, if you have a parcel that was recorded before two thousand and six, then yeah, you're not subject to those same rules because it would be unjust to have to go back and force all these people to, to change. Um, they've relied on that for so long. But once they do make changes, then that does trigger that change, does trigger that requirement to be, um, to be met. So, um, I would appreciate thirty days. Um, we can, I can interface with the recorder. I know that they've been making some policy changes that as they find, you know, different parcels of land that have been subdivided because in the past they, to avoid sending multiple, um, tax notices to property holders, they would put separate properties as one tax ID, but that's changed now because they can send multiple tax, um-
Notices.
Notices all at once together through electronic means. And so that utility has kind of gone away. And so they're starting to assign these new places or all these, as they come across them, as people try to sell them or, you know, as they come in contact with the recorder's office, they assign them these new numbers. with the recorder's office, they assign them these new numbers, and we had an issue maybe a couple of weeks ago, Tim will remember this, where someone was trying to sell a piece of property, and it would have become an illegal subdivision as a result of a road going through it, um, and so this issue of them assigning these new parcel numbers, uh, it is creating some friction, so, um, it sounds like we need, I would like to get the recorder's input on what's going on here, um, and then issue a legal decision, or a legal opinion.
That's for getting conflicting information on what each thinks the recorder said.
When, when was that, when was the road constructed that caused this issue?
It, it's in the description there. If that's the question, then maybe I propose to prove it as it is, if we can, if we, if we haven't got the legal description in thirty days, give us a chance to come back, if it's gonna take that long, so we can keep it together.
Yeah, I don't think you have to come back in thirty days, there's, Commissioner Christensen was suggesting we could continue this item for thirty days to get these other issues worked out. If you're more comfortable with us approving it the way it is...
But we've been at sixty days already, from our end, we've already, we're already delayed sixty days.
Yeah, so we can, we can approve it with the existing conditions, and you can just follow those, and meet the requirements.
If that's what you need, then we'll follow that, but I, I gotta make my case for, for that, and you, and you gotta give me credit for making my case, but if you approve it as it is, that's okay, we'll, we'll do what you, what you tell us to do, we'll do.
We're, we've offered multiple times now, what's easiest for you, we can, we can pass it with these conditions, or we can continue it, and the conditions might be edited.
Yeah, if those are my two conditions, I'll, I'll take it approved tonight.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll work on it.
Does anybody see it differently than I've, the way I've just explained it?
Oh, good, that's what you explained.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hang on just a second.
I'm not ready.
Not ready. Have you given all your comments?
Done.
Okay. Anybody else here wanna make a comment on this item tonight? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that nobody else was itching to talk about the Providence Cemetery.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Providence City Cemetery CUP amendment with the three conditions from staff.
And the three conclusions.
And the three conclusions.
Second motion?
We have a motion and second to approve the Providence Cemetery CUP based on three conditions and three conclusions, any further discussion, commissioners? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for your patience.
I don't know if you want to entertain maybe a, a chair.
I thought the same thing.
I don't know, if you want to entertain maybe a five minute break, I just need to get the applicant on the phone for this next item.
Okay. Okay, so, uh...
On the hobbled dog?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the agent, and then the property owners are separate, but I just gotta grab the phone and call it in here.
Okay.
Do you need some help with that?
I don't.
So we'll take five minutes, then.
You did get your...
Thanks, Chris.
You were wanting it for later, but just walk out.
There's more tucked under the table there. Take it right by you, Chris.
You got a half mile, you do a mile of course, but okay.
Do you want me to dial it up now, or?
I would, I don't want to wait till the others come back.
If that road was true there, if we have a natural barrier that was pre, pre two thousand and six, it's its own parcel, whether the recorder did his job or not.
Correct, and so, I mean, it...
That was out in Washington Smithville.
Separated prior to two thousand and six.
All right, so we got it.
We'll just, do you have that road reference on that?
The legal parcel.
There is one there.
Doesn't have a description. Should have been done, because it's part of Providence City.
Good job.
Proper. I'll just give you an example of how complex things are right now, remember the slaughter, small scale slaughter?
River Heights is what I should say.
Small scale slaughter out in Congress. Partially presented, had one component, they got a survey, they increased the...
That's why they're so adamant.
So when they dedicated right of way?
Okay.
Parceling up.
Thank you. I would have appreciated that as part of the staff report.
Well, I just thought it was way interesting.
This is not the issue here, but it's like some years ago, it's becoming an issue now, but it's also helping to, uh, our community system to...
That's a bit back to the...
We're able to better alert applicants, what Andy was just helping to understand, they might create a parcel number.
Did catch me by surprise.
When this is recorded, they, they might just do it out of willingness, and the, the illegal or restricted division is not an issue, because it's in...
I think, oh, there you go, chase lane up there.
Just need to clarify.
Yeah.
And, I mean, there's some, like, there's moving parts with the assessor's office, because there's, for example, when the recorder starts assigning these parcel numbers, that suddenly it falls below the requirement for green, so it's taxed at a different rate, and so, you know, the assessor has their own policies, as well, you know, taxation will count these three parcel numbers, one parcel, that doesn't affect, like, what happens in the land use.
How do you get fifty percent of the ag production on a cemetery?
Well, it's, if flowers are collected at Memorial Day, public, it's public, I mean, if this were a private park...
Funny thing to me is like they're such a hurry, but like...
Probably with River Heights, because they would be collecting tax.
Cemeteries move slow, they're very slow.
It's not getting overflowed in two weeks.
Yeah.
But there's still a lot of moving parts, and, yes, I mean, making a transfer from a more intensive to... Because you have parcels that were divided in the past, you know, these situations that are thirty years later, so that it's... That can be changed.
When you came in for a CUP in the nineties, I think that's where you get...
Wait, wait.
Didn't change anything in a hundred and fifty years, you came in and got one additional use permit, now you're amending that.
Right.
That brought you under the different set of rules.
Right, so, yeah, so I mean...
Well, when they put a restroom in it, it changed the use.
Right, and it's like, I mean, what I was saying with, you know, yeah, if you have your parcel recorded prior to two thousand and six, fine, but once you start trying to change that, you know, subdividing your parcel, subject to this higher law, so.
I didn't buy the grandsons.
Yeah, I, I mean, this, this one is, got a, there's public candidacy, spend five thousand bucks for a survey. I think silly, but what we have to do, however, I know there are armstones.
Ready, Angie?
There's a hundred acre parcel, or a fifty acre parcel, and all of the, you put a canal through it, you put a ditch through it, or what I'm, what I'm thinking of is a family compound, and you've got three or four homes that are on one parcel.
And so, you know, we had a challenge, you know, that we were talking about, where there's this big piece of farmland, and we come through, you pass it, seven or eight homes that are all on the same side, tell that it was just a kid, tell the house is on that land, and now it's quite an even more thing. I couldn't try to do that anymore, because the last time you did that was prior to two thousand and six, now that you're trying to do it again, illegal subdivision, so you won't be able to do that, and they...
A little huge, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think it's, you know, so if you wanted to, wanted to make those lots, I mean, they are, they're nonconforming, as they are, we put a big hurdle in front of those, it's hard, are we gonna change anything? All we're doing is charging every one of them a survey, and all of this, to do absolutely nothing but change the, change the legal description, and I think it's, you know, I think that's...
But there's gotta be a legal description sitting somewhere, and that has to fall upon those.
Ask one, two, three.
Just like Brady said, as your city, you want that, they have that. It's tough getting a surveyor, but, you know, we're, kind of quicker than...
Forrest Olson, looked at it, and, well, we're gonna continue to work through it.
They've been at this for sixty days, they've been arguing back and forth on this.
Okay, let's pick up where we left off, commissioners, so we have, uh, item number six, hobbled dog cidery conditional use permit, we'll begin with a staff report, please. Uh, first, Angie, uh, we've got someone joining us on the phone, can you tell us who that is?
Uh, yes, that is the agent for the application, Steve Martin, he's an engineer, who has drawn up the plans and is representing the property owners on this.
Okay, thank you.
The hobbled dog cidery conditional use permit is to request to operate a winery facility, which is use type sixty-one sixty, ten acres in the eight-ten zone. Uh, as you may recall, in September of last year, the commission held a public hearing recommending approval of the proposed amendments to Title Seventeen, creating this new use type, um, and then the county council approved that as ordinance twenty-two-one-twenty-one. So this is the first CUP application, process for, uh, this new winery use type, um, and yeah, we've had a few hiccups, but I think we're in a good place at the moment. Um, so the applicant is proposing to operate a winery, which is defined as an agricultural processing facility used for the commercial purpose of processing fruits, plants, honey or milk, or other like substance to produce wine, uh, so the specific use for this proposed winery is to produce premium alcoholic and non-alcoholic ciders, with an ultimate production of seventy-five hundred cases per year. Uh, the use type definition for winery allows a maximum of fifteen thousand cases, um, in addition to the processing and production of the cider, the proposed use will also include public tours, tastings, and retail sales. Uh, per the letter of intent and plans which you have attached to your staff report, a new forty-two hundred, almost forty-three hundred square foot, um, structure will be built, uh, to house the cider facility and related uses, so about two thousand square feet of that will be the cider production and support space, another twenty-two, almost twenty-three hundred square feet will be hospitality and administration, and then there'll be a small patio as part of it as well. Uh, the cidery will be situated, situated within the area of the existing barn and storage, storage shed, sorry, I can't talk anymore, north of the existing residence, um, so kind of in this area here on the map, around the aerial, it will have a setback of over four hundred and fifty feet from the county road, eighty-three hundred south. Um, outdoor areas will also be improved to accommodate, um, picnics and events out there. Uh, the use type definition for winery facility requires that rind produced at the facility must be produced from fifty-one percent or more of agricultural products that have been grown on the site, or within the legally defined boundaries of Cache County, actually, I shouldn't have said the site, it is the legally defined boundaries of Cache County. Uh, currently, the subject property has half an acre of apple and other fruit orchard crops, uh, a nursery, and seven acres set aside for future, future apple orchards. Uh, the use definition also allows for, in the event of a crop failure or damage that results in inefficient supply from within the county, that they can obtain product from other suppliers in the state in order to produce their cider. Uh, the applicant is also proposing onsite improvements, including but not limited to widening of the existing driveway, a new twenty foot wide access road and parking areas, sanitary wastewater leach field system, a process wastewater system, stormwater management improvements, fire protection, storage, et cetera. And again, most of this is detailed in the letter of intent and plans that are attached to your staff report. Uh, they anticipate having three full-time employees and three part-time employees during the non-harvest season, and then six full-time during harvest and bottling seasons, uh, the employees do not reside on site. Uh, anticipated visitors to the, um, winery are between twenty per day with a peak of sixty, uh, the applicant has also provided some analysis on average daily trips for the proposed use as part of the application packet, including a truck, truck or shipping, um, trucks per year at forty-eight, and sixty trips per day for passenger vehicles. Um, hours of operation are proposed from seven AM to nine PM Monday through Friday during non-harvest, and six AM to ten PM Monday through Sunday during harvest season. Uh, the tasting room hours are slightly different and extend through all days of the week, and that is just one question that, it was a little confusing on the definition that I proposed as a conclusion, if you wanted to go forward with this, that we just kind of clear that up, uh, because the definition seems to say that the tasting room and accessory uses can occur at the same time of the hours of operation of the winery, so I don't know if that's just the production part, or if it would allow for the staggering of those hours, it's just not terribly clear, but as the land use authority, if you want to interpret that, and just make a conclusion on that, I think we can clear that up. Uh, the parcel is legal, it has not changed size or configuration since nineteen, or since two thousand and six. Um, again, we have the winery definition listed there, it's fairly lengthy, so I'm not gonna read through all of it, uh, but that one question that I did have on page four of seven, um, item number four of the definition talks about the retail sales, tours, and tasting facilities, uh, and it means tours of the winery or tasting of beverages produced by the winery or both during operating hours. So again, I, that just wasn't clear to me, just probably something was kind of overlooked, but I think the staggering hours is fine, again, I just think we need to make a determination and clear that up. Um, so county ordinance stipulates that the post-conditional use permit must not result in situations that create a need for essential services that cannot be reasonably expected or reasonably met by local service providers, including road access, emergency vehicle access, fire protection, law enforcement, et cetera. So the primary access to the subject property here is eighty-three hundred south, uh, it is a county facility, um, it is a dead-end road, so as you come off of four hundred west, I'm sorry, maybe I'll expand out a little bit, come off of four hundred west and down eighty-three hundred south, um, pretty soon after the subject properties, um, go past their property line, it kind of dead-ends, and it's a little difficult to turn around in here, because you're kind of using somebody's property to turn around, um, and then there's kind of a drop off of slope here, uh, so it does dead-end, um, it does connect to, it's about a half mile long, also provides access to approximately ten homes and agricultural fields, with an average daily traffic of a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five trips. Um, as mentioned, it connects to four hundred west, which is a county road, and classified as a minor collector, which has a link between Hyrum and Paradise, um, and then eighty-three hundred is a minor local road classification. Um, it has a paved average width of eighteen feet, that has large sections with major distress, um, correct term is called alligator cracking, um, likely caused by poor drainage and thin pavement, there are no speed limit signs posted, and there is a dedicated right of way of forty-nine and a half feet. Based on current and anticipated use, the standards for minor, minor local road are used to determine impacts and conditions, um, eighty-three hundred south is considered substandard as to with the travel lanes, dedicated right of way, paved and gravel shoulders, clear zone, and is considered poor as to structural condition. Uh, one of the items listed as an issue is just kind of understanding road classifications with use types in the county, um, and it's probably a larger discussion that needs to be had, uh, but the county engineer did, um, identify improvements that would need to be made in order to accommodate this use. But again, I think there may be a larger discussion in the future on agritourism, winery, and those different kind of mixed uses on the town. Uh, so parking for this type of use requires a parking analysis, if more than five parking stalls will be required, uh, the applicant as part of their, um, packet did provide an analysis, um, one of the conditions that I proposed is a draft condition, if you want to move forward, is just that, that would need to, we need to confirm it meets the definition requirements for a parking analysis, and then is reviewed and approved by the county engineer. Uh, Logan City Environmental does provide residential refuse containers and collection services at the subject property, uh, they will need to discuss further with Logan City if a commercial dumpster will be required for this use. for this use. The use type definition for winery does not specify any water right requirements. In the letter of intent, the applicant referenced hydrology and water quality under the subhitting of water supply and groundwater. In that section, in the written section, it was very general as to where the water was coming from or not, but did state that it was plentiful for the use. I did do just the water rights search on the Utah Division of Water Rights and found that there was just one domestic associated with this. Later, working with the applicant and agent, I was able to track down water rights with Paradise Irrigation Company, and that does provide them plentiful water rights. Of course, Bear River, not Bear River, the Water Rights Division, Will Atkins, did mention that, you know, there will be some change applications required to change some of those over to commercial use, but he did not foresee an issue with that. And in the letter of intent packet, a wastewater feasibility study was also provided with two options for treatment and disposal of the wastewater. But at the time this staff report was written, Bear River Health Department had not reviewed that to confirm whether either of those options will comply with the requirements. We did hear back from Bear River today that Bear River Health Department permits a certain kind of wastewater facility, and this may not be the type that they can permit, but the State Department of Environmental Quality can. So we have found a, a solution through a condition of approval for that issue. The Fire District will require installation of an onsite water supply for fire protection, so they will need to work with Fire District to oversee the scheduling process for that. Reasonably anticipated issues. Kind of had to dig for these, but noxus odor. I know agricultural presence in the county is understood use, along with the sights, sounds, and smells associated with that. This is probably very similar to that, but not knowing if fermentation processes produce additional, it could be a potential impact. Noise hours for the operations do extend for the tasting room, Monday through Sunday, up until ten PM. So just provisioned to ensure that residents are not being disturbed is suggested. Traffic, again, due to the type of facilities, number of employees, and anticipated number of visitors, eighty-three-hundred south is substandard and would require some improvements. Did send out the public notice, did not receive any comments. Oh, actually, I take that back. I did receive three comments today, all in support. I have uploaded those to the shared drive, because they also all support the proposed use and like the idea of using agricultural land in an ag-type use that benefits the surrounding community and preserves that agricultural land. So staff initially on the staff report recommending continuing this up to ninety days to resolve some of those issues that we talked about, but since in the last two days we were able to cover a lot of ground in your, the shared drive, I have drafted a list of conditions of approval, in case you wanted to just move forward on this tonight, but we can go over those if you want. But they do have to do with, you know, making sure we have the correct water rights in place and the type of water rights, getting that wastewater or septic approved through the state or Bear River Health Department, the list of road improvements required by the county engineer, et cetera. So with that, that does conclude my staff report.
Commissioners, questions for staff?
So they have the, the road, I just, just pulled it up here now that new conditions for approval. So the road has been looked at and realized what it's going to take to.
Yeah, and again, that larger conversation I talked about that we might need to have with these different use types in county roads, it's difficult to know to what extent they would have to improve it, but what's listed there are the recommendations by the county for this use.
Anything else, commissioners? Okay, Mr. Martin, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you. I also hear crunching of paper, but so thank you for allowing me to, to unmobley here. I would prefer to be there in person, but this is the next best thing. I think what I'd like to do is, if you don't mind, is have the property owners introduce themselves and add to the project description, and then I will follow them up.
Okay, sounds good. Come on up. Please state your name.
First, I'd like to thank you guys for reviewing our application. My name is Ben Keaty. I'm current, I currently work as a firefighter. My wife, Lori Spears, is an insect biologist that works in the agricultural field. We're the owners of Hobbled Dog, which is named after the, the disabled animals that we've rescued and loved over the years. We moved to the area surrounding Paradise from Logan City in two thousand and fourteen because we wanted to live in the country and produce some of our own food. We currently grow some raspberries, blackberries, some other fruits and vegetable crops, but we mostly focus on the production of cider and heirloom apples. They're known, they're better known for hard cider than the dessert variety of apples. We currently have about five hundred apple trees that are grown on dwarf and semi-dwarf root stocks and have paid deposits on more apple trees for the planting of twenty-twenty-three and twenty-four. We've been making wine for about twenty years and cider for about ten. Our hobby and tradition of making wine has now transformed into our desire to start our own business and share our non-alcoholic and alcoholic ciders that are made from fruit grown onsite and in the local area. We have a passion for our locally grown products and also our understanding and appreciation for agriculture with the community and the visitors to Cache Valley. We believe that we've got a very well-structured project from the orchard development through the facility design and supporting infrastructure. We've brought aboard the firm of Steve Martin and Associates that specializes in the planning, design, and development of winery facilities, and to assist with the CUP application and design of the project. And he's already on remotely. He can follow up with additional details on the product, project.
Real quick, you guys have seen the conditions that have been put together?
We have. They were just sent out not too long ago, earlier today.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Questions for the landowners, commissioners?
Are you, sorry, I guess one quick one, on your hours of operation that the, like seven AM and nine PM, like it's still dark, in the winter, it's still dark at seven AM and like nine PM, it's pretty dark, too.
Yeah, I think those, those hours were to not kind of pigeonhole us, and we kind of, we understand that when we first open, our hours will probably be reduced. And then if there is demand, then we might extend those hours.
That's fair.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Martin, the time is yours.
All right, Steve Martin, Steve, my name. I'm a licensed engineer, as they indicated with the firm, Steve Martin Associates. First, I'd like to thank Angie for her work on the staff report and her subsequent work on putting the conditions of approval together for the project. Per the staff report, the original conclusion of the report was to continue this for ninety days to resolve four issues, which included the water rights, wastewater treatment, and disposal feasibility, the road classification, and then the interpretation of the tasting room hours. I believe these items, you know, just literally over the past couple days have been addressed sufficiently, and we can discuss them further tonight, but I think that they've been addressed to the level that we could hear the project through and not go to a continuance. And we'd be glad to hit each item. I can preempt that and, and talk about a few, and then answer any follow-up questions. I think that Angie has indicated that there is no issues with the water rights after we provided the nine shares or documentation of the nine shares, which equates to about, just so you know, about nine point seven million gallons. And this cider facility will use one point five percent of that. So as far as water use, the total water use will be a hundred and fifty thousand gallons in a year. That's equivalent to four hundred, or equates to four hundred and eleven gallons per day. So that's, that's equivalent to a three-bedroom house. And respectively, that's also the amount of wastewater that will be generated from the facility, both with sanitary and process wastewater. As Angie indicated, we prepared a wastewater feasibility study for both the sanitary and the process wastewater with projected flows and proposed treatment systems. And we coordinated with Richard Warley at Bear River Health Department on that. And as Angie also mentioned, we just received an email from him stating that they have reviewed the feasibility proposal and are comfortable with moving forward. As far as the tasting room and the operating hours, the tasting room hours are less because they are during the operating hours, but they're a shorter timeframe because you're not going to bring visitors or tasters in, you know, it's at six, seven in the morning. And the reason for the six AM start during harvest is because the apples obviously prefer to be harvested when it's cooler temperatures and brought in. The road classification and conditions, I think we've fortunately worked through that recently, and we have read through the conditions of approval that were drafted, and we find them to be reasonable and acceptable. And in those conditions of approval, the road is addressed with a widening of the shoulder on the frontage. And I've talked to the property owners about this and the implications of it and so forth, and they're in agreement with that condition. There's one typo on condition five C that references the intersection at eighty-one-hundred south, just a typo, it should be eighty-three-hundred south. And then the only other comment I have in the project description was, under the employees, it indicates that employees would not reside on site. And I just wanted to point out that Ben and Lori are two of the employees, and they do reside on site. Other than that, I think Angie's project description was full for what we're proposing. And if you have any questions of us on a technical nature, on the architecture of the building, we'll be glad, I'll be glad to respond to that.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Martin?
I just one, and I guess probably either of you can answer it. So of those nine shares of irrigation, I assume you're going to do a change application to move some of those to the well or all of them to the well? And then do your drip irrigation also out of those for your, for your trees? Or are they going to be still irrigated out of your shares? Because I assume that four hundred gallons a day was what you're going to use in your facilities, not with water in your.
Yeah, so we have, we have seven, seven shares that are pressurized irrigation for the irrigating, you know, outside plants and whatnot. We do use like a drip system for that, as our, our house uses three shares for the well, and we would just transfer that, transfer one of those.
You just transfer the, yeah, the way he made it sound, you're going to just use all, all the shares, that makes more sense.
Yeah, okay. Other questions for Mr. Martin or the owners? Okay. It's not a public hearing, but is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on this CUP? And if not, we can move this along, so, just as a suggestion.
Just got to get figured out how to have some good grape wine and beef while you're doing it.
Okay. All right. Doesn't look like we have any other comments. Commissioners, what would you like to do?
I would make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit. Oh, I just.
With respect to the employees, is there any modification in terms of the current wording that you'd like to make, such as no other employees or.
Other than the.
Employers other than the residents of the home? May reside on site.
Might, it might make it cleaner, I guess, in case somewhere down the road they said they couldn't live on their own farm. I can't imagine we would say that, but it would make it cleaner if we said that.
They're technically the employers, but they might have others living with them that, so maybe it's just those residing on the site, can, no additional employees other than those living on the site.
Well, then it could be all of them.
Was that, was that in the.
That would work.
No. I'm just, I've written down here, the employees do not reside on site except for the owner-operators.
That's what, yeah.
Was that in the conditions or just in the?
It's just a note that I added to the staff report. I was going to add to number nine, A nine, just those four words.
Would that change then?
So could we just strike those, those words? I mean, if it's not a condition, all that is, is just a.
It's not part of a condition, right?
It is not. It's just part of their letter of intent and how they're operating, but it doesn't clearly state that the owner-operators will be living there, but I, I can just add that phrase, except for owner-operators in the staff report, and I think that would cover it.
Okay, is that comfortable with commissioners? Okay. You can continue.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the hobbled dog cidery CUP with the seventeen conditions and three conclusions, and the modification to the staff report, the owner living there and working there.
And the one typographical error.
And, and eighty-one-hundred changed to eighty-three-hundred.
Noted.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion in a second to approve the hobbled dog cidery CUP based on seventeen conditions, three conclusions, and the edits as noted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I think we're good.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Good luck on your next agenda item.
Okay, have a good evening.
All right, you too. Bye.
Bye. Okay, commissioners, as it's coming up on our.
Make it a night and stay.
Witching, witching hour. Uh, we would need to extend our meeting as a first order of business, please.
I'll make a motion that we extend the meeting to nine o'clock. We still have a public hearing.
And as we're making that, I do, I do need to leave here in short order.
Okay, how short?
Well, I should have left a while ago. It's too exciting to leave, right? We have some important stuff on the agenda, and I've been dragging it. Been dragging it out, so.
Thanks for sticking around as long as you did. Okay, so we have a motion to extend the meeting till nine. Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we motion a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Time over to staff to tell us about the Cache County General Plan.
I think so. Great, thanks. And since we, I don't think we have any members of the public here who mentioned, are you here for the general, okay.
Yeah.
One, okay.
Important one.
An important one, okay, great. I was going to modify a little bit, but I, just for the sake of time, I'll, I'll move through this as quickly as possible, but just knowing, and I know we were missing some commissioners at the workshop last week as well, but I will, I will move through this as quickly as possible for sake of time. I also too, so, oh, just for the record, Lauren Ryan, the planner with Cache County, I also want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission members that were on the steering committee for this project. I know it was a long time coming, so I just appreciate your time and expert knowledge on the topics throughout this whole process. So we're at the point where Planning and Zoning can make a formal recommendation to adopt the general plan. That moves on to the Cache County Council, and then ultimately, the plan will have to be adopted by the county council. So tonight, we're reviewing the general plan addressing policies, goals, and strategies for growth. There's also three supplemental documents that go to, along with the general plan to help support it, the regional collaboration plan, how do we collaborate with other. help support it, the regional collaboration plan, how do we collaborate with other cities, the urban and rural area assessment, what are the urban and rural growth patterns and needs, and then the cost of services planning model, what are the costs associated with growth? And you will see in your packet that that urban and rural area assessment and cost of services planning model are combined into one large document, but there are, there are kind of two separate appendices to that plan for, for clarification there. So once again, the general plan is an advisory document that guides the future growth of the county. It does not create any regulations or requirements, but recommends new implementation strategies, and that the general plan will be used as a guiding tool for future implementation in the form of potential zoning code updates and other tools. And with this update, as we saw tonight with a lot of these, the, you guys grappling with, with rezones, hopefully it will achieve some actionable strategies and policies so that the plan will be utilized and used as a decision-making tool going forward. So here's the layout of the general plan, and I'll just go through these quickly. So the purpose of the, the introduction section of the general, general plan provides an overview of the county, the organization and use of the plan, and the relationship between the general plan and other long-range planning documents. The plan direction section provides the mission, vision, vision, and guiding principles for the general plan. And once again, here are the guiding principles that are the, help steer the framework of the general plan. These were developed from extensive public outreach with the public, heritage and stewardship, regional collaboration, valley connectivity and transportation, active lifestyles and recreation, and economic vitality. The policy framework element section provides the framework to support those counties' mission, vision, and guiding principles with goals, policies, and strategies. We then get to the future land use map, which provides a land use map for the unincorporated county that will help to guide future zoning and provides guidance and predictability for those areas. I will note too that knowing that the boundaries of, you know, as annexations are happening, these boundaries will change, but we'll have a, a date on the, on the document with the land use map, but it will become digital, and so we'll be able to update the, the future land use map going forward. And then the implementation and adaptive management section of the plan provides implementation strategies and guidance for the general plan, and then concludes with the appendices. So briefly, I, I know we've talked about these time and time again, but just for the sake of the public hearing, just want to go over that. We've done extensive public outreach throughout the, the process. Process started in late 2019, so that's given us ample time to do numerous outreach efforts throughout the process to help form, form the general plan and the, and the guiding And so I, I won't touch on these in depth, but once again, just want to reiterate the, the public process that we've gone through with this plan. And then the regional collaboration plan, so that's that supplemental document to the general plan, and its goal is to establish awareness and develop strategies for service-based growth between the county and each community. The document's goal, hopes to outline the processes to how we will work with our, the various municipalities throughout Cache County. And so that document is outlined kind of through an introduction, and then moves into a background on important services that are shared countywide, such as roadway, sewer, water, fire, and emergency management. And then the document concludes with recommendations and implementation strategies that support those that are recommended within the general plan. So that was very quick overview. If you have any questions on those two documents right now, I'm happy to pause, but otherwise I will let Tim hop in and talk about the urban and rural area assessment and cost of services.
Do you have something?
Yeah, can I ask a, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
On the regional collaboration, nine, under law enforcement? I just wasn't reading it very well, it didn't make sense to me. Maybe I'm just not pausing, or, do you know what I mean, like when you read something, I'm not reading at the same rate. Under law enforcement?
The availability of county providing policing pursuant to that, that sentence there?
I think so. The availability of county providing policing pursuant to contracting with willing communities is the primary. Well, it sounds good now.
I think part of that comes from is, is like the dog kennels and the dog things, the sheriffs pointed out that some communities have a different policy on dog unleashing versus the county, and so that's one thing that I was looking at on there.
Gotcha. And I will note too that since the workshop last week, I've implemented those, those changes that were discussed at that, I should, yeah, I should mention that, that we discussed at the, at the last workshop meeting.
On page, on page thirteen, I was, I guess, a little happily surprised to read that our, I mean, like Hyde Park, we have an annexation zone. In general, you make this statement that our annexation zones are, tend to be bigger than what they'll actually fill in to be. That was nice to hear. And so to hear that also you might tell cities where that growth is anticipated to come would be great information, you know?
Right.
Is our zone too big, or, yeah.
Right, and I think, right, right, and I think that's something that, that we see a lot, is that, you know, communities have these really large future annexation areas, probably so they have some predictability in what happens within their city boundaries, right? But do they have, you know, enough services to reasonably grow into that, that annexation area? And how can we provide, I think through the, the urban and rural area assessment and cost of services plan, we'll have a little bit more of a direction in, in what growth would look like in those areas.
I add to that though, I mean, you take for instance, Wellsville and Mendon and Paradise. They mapped out an annexation area, and it's why it isn't what they can probably provide water for, but yet it gives the county area ideas of where they go to school, or church, or whatever else. I mean, twenty-four-hundred west is just a defining factor, I get to go to Wellsville School, and the other side gets to go to Hiram School, or whatever else, so it still helps in a way.
Right, right, definitely, for some of those specific type of, yeah, that's very important to mention.
City lines.
Well, and it, it also defines where the fire goes too. I mean, Wellsville only goes to those unless they're called out by the county, but for Wellsville City, when I call in, it goes directly to Wellsville City, so there are some, some things that tie in with those.
Right, right.
Larger annexation.
Right, right, beyond just, yeah, wanting to have some influence over what development happens in those areas, there's more implications beyond just development. That's a really good point.
Land use on recommendation three, it talks about, you know, zoning within those annexation policy areas, and again, I would just reiterate, you know, like, we's a county, say, two acres, and we're doing it small because it could be annexed into a city, and yet for a city, a two-acre parcel is way too big to provide services for.
But the nice thing is, as soon as you annex it, then you can split it into ten, if you want.
Yeah, and they don't, and so then they come in with this large parcel that we're providing roads, water, and sewer pipe to, for not a whole lot of benefit to the city financially. But, I mean, I get that, I mean, that, but I still, yeah, so I'm not necessarily against it.
Okay.
Number four, the cluster development regulations right after it. I just hope that that cluster development isn't meant, like when we do, and I don't know, maybe, maybe this is just our city issue, when we say like, and let's say in a, you know, we want this cluster development, but we're looking for an average, I don't know if it's an average density, I just hope that it's not ten smaller homes, or ten smaller lots, so that someone can have this huge estate that's privately owned, you know? I mean, at least for our city, it's not meant that way. And so I, I hope that that cluster is meant for, like this guy was trying to do on the rezone, he, he meant to keep a lot of that open land.
Just because it was wetland.
How convenient, right? But, yeah, I mean, I hope, and I don't know how that works, I don't know how this, you know, there's.
So you're saying the, the open land should be.
Remain.
But.
That gets tricky.
I know, I know.
Well, I'll just add, and it depends city by city in that annexation area, there, there's a lot to explore and collaborate on between county and city. You know, where can a city reasonably provide services and when, versus maybe that's out of feasible range for a city, and then maybe county and city can explore together what the appropriate balance of growth and preservation is. I always mention specific clusters, you think of the ag remainder or the open space area, and there's a lot of ways to fence it, and stable, and whether it's one or two owners owning the agricultural land and its functions, or whether it's a group approach, I think either or could work. And so if I own a acre lot on the edge of the development, and behind me is the ag remainder parcel, I might feel like I'm on a ten-acre lot, and maybe I'll have to own the whole thing. So I think there's some mix and match opportunities, cluster development.
I would warn that, like, at urban three, that Joe Minicozzi, if any of you have heard him speak at LEAGUE or anywhere, he's pointed out that when you have some of these public facilities, like, let's say, a lake, and so this may be very different from a lake, but when you have a lake, it works out much better for the whole community if the land completely, you know, just adjacent to the lake is publicly owned, versus everybody's private little lake home, house that owns the property surrounding the lake, is not near as beneficial to the whole community as having the lake property be publicly owned.
Right, right, and I think.
Now that applies to farmland, because you're right, I would love for, someone else has horses in my backyard, and that benefits me, and I don't care that I own them or have access to the horses.
Right, right. And I think a lot of that too comes down to how, you know, this, this starts the, the conversation and the direction, and then once we come down to, you know, implementing actually, you know, policies within ordinances, ideas like this can be, you know, really, really refined within that, that policy, so. Yeah. I was going to say, you're bringing up a lake and a.
Property owners will own up to the lake, but there's going to be public access, so we'll see how it works.
One thing that I find is interesting with this, and is the housing affordability. It's almost like oxymoron with the county, because limited number of units per parcel, and, I mean, I recognize that we have to acknowledge it for state funding and to be compliant with other stuff, but it's just interesting that, you know, the affordability, if somebody can hardly afford a house, I guarantee you they're not going to be buying a lot in the county, paving the frontage, and then going through all the hoopla of building the house.
Right, right.
It is what it is.
Right.
Huh?
Drilling a well.
Yeah.
Right, and I think there's some recognition throughout the plan that obviously high-density housing and really addressing some of those affordability issues are, don't belong within unincorporated county, just because the services can't necessarily support that right now, but how do we, you know, assist and plan with our various, you know, communities throughout, throughout county to address that?
It could tie more to the annexation plans, but, I don't know, it's just an interesting thought.
Okay.
And same thing for Hyde Park City, you know, we have a big annexation area west of the airport, we have this tiny, we have Hyde Park and then the airport, and we have this tiny little strip that we can get to our annexation area west of the airport, and it's a huge area, but some have said, okay, well, good luck using sewer, good luck, you know, are you pumping all of that sewer up and over? Or anyway, so help the county on those kinds of things.
Straight south with it at that point.
Yeah, through North Logan, or straight to Logan, or anyway, yeah.
Facilitator, collaboration in those conversations.
Yeah. We will use you.
I guess I, I'm going, going to take off, but I guess one comment I would make, just seems in these plans, and I know we, I like shall statements in plans, you know, that this is, this is what we're going to do, seems like we have a lot of, of just information, you know, here, this is, this is what currently exists, this is, this is maybe what we might want to think to do. And, and so my input on that as I, as I walk out the door is, I support moving on to the general plan, but I think these other plans probably need a little more work. You know, if we're really making a plan, this seems like more of a, more of a statement of, of some facts. I, I would, I would encourage looking more towards, you know, a, a shall statement, you know, that how we'll, how we will go about coordinating with this, or we will, staff or planning commissions will coordinate in one way or another, and I know we can't drive what the municipalities do or other organizations, but I think our, our joint meetings with the council is a good example of those things, and, and maybe some sort of statements like that in these, in these plans. If we're, if, if we're saying we want to collaborate, we should put some mechanisms in place to, to make that happen, that, I think that should be part of the plan, so that's my statement.
Thank you.
All right. I will touch on the.
I was just going to say, other questions for Lauren, or? Okay, just making sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'll jump in, thank you. So this urban rural area assessment document, I'll just point out with an apology that it's come a long way since Thursday, and then unfortunately, the version that was uploaded in your folder was a few missing pieces that are not in what I'm going to show on the screen. So it's going to be a little different up here in terms of a couple of items that are missing. But that being said, the opening statement is a statement of the very desirable and enjoyable place this county is to live, highly desirable, and therefore it's going to grow. The projections are an additional forty-eight thousand new residents, twenty-two thousand new households, and twenty-three thousand four hundred new employees. This statement of eighty-five percent of the county's growth has been internal, is influenced by the recent Housing Task Force discussions, and that the dramatic housing cost increases are generating strong demand for more diverse housing. So it's just kind of a statement upfront that that's part of the context of the choice and challenge that is at hand.
Tim, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Where did the study of the eighty-five percent come from? Because I'm being emailed that that's erroneous.
I believe that came from Kemsy Gardner Institute, but I can.
I would like, if you would email that to me, because I've got citizens who are questioning that.
I'll have to interrupt you on that, but I actually just found one other thing that I found interesting, and I think I'm in the right one, are we, and I know you provided us three different documents for tonight. Are all three kind of based on what we're going through?
Right, yep.
So I'm in, I'm in item seven, appendix D, regional collaboration plan.
Right.
Page six of sixteen, it talks about sewer. Full-service sanitary sewer systems, including sewer collection and processing, are provided by three entities in the county you've left off to. You've got Richmond and Lewiston that also have sewer, sewer systems.
Page you on, Brady?
Six of sixteen.
Of the collaboration.
We have Logan City, and it says where it collects, we got Hiram City, says it collects Hiram, we got Wellsville collects Wellsville, you got Richmond with the state-of-the-art membrane system, similar to Hiram. And then you got Lewiston with their ponds. Lewiston's ponds don't take in the whole city, but they take in the.
Right, and then you said Richmond was the other one?
Huh?
Richmond was the other one? That's what you said? Okay, okay. Noted, thanks.
Thank you.
Get some extra ice cream cone next time you come.
Oh, yeah.
I know, well, now that, yeah, sorry. I failed.
Oh, we got one more, we got two in Richmond. North ponds in the south, the north system and the south system.
That's right.
I might just, way of, of backing out just for a moment, I, I'm, my current frame I, I'm, my current frame, thought framework for these plans is the, the general plan being a policy plan, uh, you know, with goals and strategies, recommendations.
Aspirational.
Aspirational, um, whereas regional collaboration plan could be viewed as kind of a framework plan. How we work together, how we, it's somewhat strategic, but, but kind of a framework plan of how we talk about general plan, policy, goals and strategies together with the partner communities. And then I think this, uh, urban rural area assessment and the cost of services analyses that go with it is somewhat, it's assessment and analysis. And it supports both of the plans in that regard, but it's, it's very much what if oriented. And let's explore and learn and have that discussion evolve.
Like a workbook.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a workbook, it's, uh, but it's also a framework for continuing to study and learn and explore. This reference from, uh, this map is actually from an assessment. It's called the USDA Cache County Resource Assessment Map. And there's quite a bit of great information that we've, we've linked to and it, it clearly shows the agricultural area in orange and the, uh, at least municipality areas, development areas in purple. And that that's the focus of the assessment is where most of the development is likely to occur and where the services are available. The purpose of this assessment is to explore new policies and zoning tools that could help shape more desirable and beneficial growth patterns within this changing area. And these are some of the key questions that generally are kept in mind. About what are current services, how are they impacted, what new services can be incorporated and where? Environmental impacts to consider, how to achieve open spaces and desired trail corridors preserved as land develops. And our current development or recent past trends, sustainable moving forward, what housing needs are being met. And what, how should development improve economic development and how to fund improvements to promote growth. So the three scenarios rely on the cost of services modeling that's been a collaborative effort with, with our staff and with our consultants. Uh, appendix B is a focus more on the unincorporated services and, and the costs of services in the unincorporated area. And then, uh, appendix A is more of a, a countywide focus, but they work together and they both inform the scenarios. It's been a great, uh, combination of skills and expertise from our consultant team in that regard. So what's new since Thursday is the summary showing the, uh, current estimated population households and employees. And then the projection to twenty forty, based on Kempsey Gardner as well as Department of Workforce Services data. And then at least an initial description of how these scenarios are different. And so the pictures to the left are in the works. This. Let's see here. Sorry, I just need to, um.
Looking at that table while you're finding that, what I saw from that table is that our households, our families are getting smaller. But I know that house sizes are getting bigger.
What's getting bigger, I'm sorry?
The sizes of our homes.
Oh.
We need bigger homes for a lot fewer people.
And it, it may be that, um, that that's certainly been true in the past, over the past twenty years or so, but maybe with housing costs increasing, we're seeing
A lot of families stuffed into smaller occupancies.
Yeah, they just, they don't know what they can afford. Okay, so, um, what you have here is a description that basically you'll note from scenario to scenario, there are fewer and fewer acres developed. And just, so for example, in scenario one, which we're calling expansive growth, this is more of a, the past trend projected forward. Uh, note that the area of single family, new single family development in terms of the percentage of acres is listed, but also the total numbers. So a comparison of single family, town home, multifamily and then non-residential development is, is depicted. Uh, these graphics, when completed, will provide a good representation of uh, what the land use pattern might be. And you'll note that the picture here shows in the transfer development scenario, there is uh, less developed acreage, but more preserved acreage because that development rights are transferred from one area, uh, landing in another area. But these are summarized here in this table. And this table was not in your, uh, packet to, to review, but, uh, what you see is quite a bit of information related to, uh, how the population and employees and, um, households is, is, is being met. Here, for example, is the total developed acres. You can see from scenario one to three that that acreage drops. As does the road miles substantially drop. Which means also the utilities alongside or within those road miles also drops. As does the cost of those utilities drop and the roads. Which means the maintenance of those also drops. And so there's an increased efficiency with the same number of households being served by less infrastructure, which implies a reduced tax burden to the residents. And so, um, water use also drops. And, um, so all the details and the assumptions behind these numbers are documented or will be updated, is, you know, fully documented in the terms of methodology in the attachments in the exhibits. And, um, what follows is, uh, this needs a little more refinement, but this is, each scenario here is represented in terms of the fiscal, fiscal and economic impacts of each land use. And you'll note that scenario one at the top compared to scenario two in the middle and three at the bottom, they're, they're very similar. So I think these could be shown separately or they could be averaged together. But, uh, what, what you see is that in terms of the total tax revenues collected per acre, you see that, um, a not surprising, single family residential is the lowest in terms of the, um.
What line are you on? Sorry, what?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll highlight that there.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, property taxes and then the, any assumed point of sale. There, there is a little bit of point of sale in terms of people clicking online and buying things. They, they could generate a little bit of sales tax per household. That, that does come back to the city. And then there's a population distribution that comes from the state. Obviously, the more people living per acre in development, whether it be single family, town home or multifamily, you see that population distribution increase per acre. And, uh, then you see the county sales tax options, but those are all added together, property tax, point of sale, population distribution and county options. And retail continues to provide the lion's share per acre, very substantial. Um, but it's interesting to compare the revenues from office and industrial compared to town home and, uh, multifamily. So there, there's some pretty, uh, interesting updates perhaps in terms of the perspective that many folks have in terms of what type of development generates what revenues, this might be worth exploring and discussing and collaborating around. That there are some fiscal economic benefits associated with housing, uh, and that housing does feed the retail. So this, you know, high value of, of retail per acre does depend on the rooftops nearby to spend the money there. So these types of things are explored and discussed. And, um, the last section here is a, a description of more detailed land use planning principles and definitions for the sake of setting the table with conversation. I think I mentioned last time that, you know, the county recognizes municipal's authority to govern and make land use decisions. But there is a balance to be found between private property rights and the policies and regulations, land use authority. And that the county must recognize property rights even within an annexation area of a community. If a city cannot service that and a property owner in the county wants to develop their property rights, then county must respect that. So that's just one of many topics that's covered here. Um, further description of how development can be a driver for open space preservation through cluster development, transfer development rates. Description of densities and, and understanding a general framework for those, discussion of accessory dwelling units. And then a section devoted to land use connectivity and mobility. And reinforcing some of what the road manuals, uh, policies and requirements are that the county's looking to build out a grid system. Uh, to make sure that there's safe and convenient access throughout the county as development occurs, but that grid system, the spacing of that grid can vary based on the type of development that, that's being proposed. So these are intended to be supportive, uh, guiding, guiding, um, descriptions for, for further discussion. And then the two appendices. So I think with that, I'll, uh, stop. This needs more development, we acknowledge.
Sorry, oh, sorry, what was that, Melinda? Right, yeah, that will, yeah, that will be included, um, yeah, apologies, I was missing out on your packet. But I'll just conclude staff's report or presentation, I guess, with saying, you know, there's a couple of different options here that, that planning commission can take this evening. You know, either, you know, making a motion to, to move, you know, just the general plan forward with the rest of these supplemental documents, if we don't feel like they're ready to move forward, um, you know, I guess saying you could move the general plan forward without, I know we talked about this through the workshop, but kind of there's some options there for, for moving items on separately, um, if need be. Um, I would say that, you know, obviously Tim pointed to where there's still some, um, things that need to be refined in here, um, and just some small edits, but I would say a majority of the, the content of what's gonna end up in these final plans is there, it's just those little, um, refinements, I would say that need to be made, but nothing, you know, major is going to change from what you're seeing in front of you this evening. So I will stop talking from there. Or answer any questions?
Yeah, questions for staff commissioners on any of the information that's been presented?
So I, I guess I, like, on, on the first rezon that we consider tonight, generally, especially at our city level, people say, don't, don't, don't let them develop that open space behind me. I love the view. Like, that's why I moved here. And our answer to them is, well, buy it. And so what hurt tonight was for that last girl to say, a farmer did try to buy that land, it's prime farm land. But he couldn't afford it. And so then I'm like, ah, so is that what the TDRs could help? Cause mostly I feel like there's not enough farmers out there willing to farm it. And so what else are we going to do? We're gonna develop it into homes that people need. But if there is a farmer out there willing to farm it, I prefer that.
If they can get it for the right price, they're willing farmers.
We, I don't know how to say this so that comes across right, but we kinda set the precedence for that. If we'd approved that deal tonight, that's gonna open a can on that whole area. And, and you're done, you're done farming, cause farmers can't compete paying residential for their land. It doesn't happen.
Right.
So if they know going into it, and that's their, I gotta be careful.
No, you're fine.
That's their reasoning in coming here is, oh, I gotta get this passed because that's the only way I can afford what I paid for it. I'm sorry, but if you go into it knowing that it's maybe not gonna go down to this R two or R five, that's your risk. If you wanna overpay for it, go ahead.
You're speculating, right?
Correct.
We can't guarantee them that they paid that for it and that's just a thought.
Right, but most of the time.
What do you think, Noel?
Two things came before the council last time and they got up and said, you know, we're trying this so we can make money for retirement. County is not here. Sure that you made a profit on your purchase, that's, can't do that. So I agree with you very much there. I mean, and there comes this open space thing that's coming up right now too. I mean, there is no magic wand that's gonna solve the open space and the farming, but at least here's somebody talking about something on it, so.
He's, he, he's, he's doing it in your own way, right? You're having to approach it the way of.
Well, I'm talking about what's been behind this and what goes here.
So the land in Smithfield, I'm a Smithfield person. My father-in-law took me down there to see it, said, you wanna buy this, you know, the Nedlow's land, it's a swamp. You can't, no one can build on that, it's a disaster. But to, to, if someone overpaid and they wanna have that development, the city can't help them, it's a disaster. It shouldn't be built on. And the only land that is being sold is farm land that isn't farmable. You know, it's a pasture, none of that was farm, you couldn't plow it, you couldn't do anything with it. And that was the same with the land west of Richmond, it's a swamp, you can't validate. That somebody paid too much for it, they're trying to get money out of it. And it's, and it's an island out in the middle of nowhere.
Then why did, why did she say that a farmer wanted to buy it?
Well.
Just to keep it as open space?
The neighborhood.
Just to keep it open.
You, if you go talk to ag credit, they'll, they'll loan you, you know, so much for, to buy the land.
You can't, you can't buy it.
To, to make it pay. And I, I bought lots of land to protect my neighborhood, but a farmer couldn't. You know, I'm in a position, I can pay for it, but a farmer couldn't do it. Because it's too much money, you know, they can pay five thousand dollars an acre and make it work. If our prayers are answered and it rains.
And, and it's a fine line because the property rights, everybody has them and that, that has to be respected. But we, we really do set the precedence here when we pull the plug on. I mean, even Mendon, Mendon's another example, because the, the couple of little deals we've done there have fit. But when you get further from town, boy, it's tough.
And it's gonna be with the next one that's next to those ones we approved. There's a couple of gaps in the middle, but sooner or later, those three in between are gonna come and still touch it. Where do you, yeah, where do you stop that is gonna be our, our question.
So my interest to come, cause I've been invited to, uh, be part of, you know, master plan in Richmond City. And when I was here before, you know, the.
Do we wanna, I mean, it's a public, do you wanna formally open the public hearing so we can have this as? I'm sorry, I'm not telling you, just.
No, I know. Yeah, which is true. But, I mean, if you want, if, if, if you are here to make comments on the general plan, we'll have, we'll, we'll open the public hearing and have you come up. But if, if we're just having a casual conversation here, we can just go ahead.
I have one thing I wanna say.
Okay, well, uh, come on, come on up here.
Second.
And hang, hang on just a second. So we do have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, state your name.
Alan Lauer. So when I was here previously at a, at a confrontation, I guess, the county staffer stood here and said that the land being proposed to be changed, the zoning was part of the city's master plan. I marched right into, next day to Richmond City and talked to the city manager, is that true? And it was not true. And, and I'm part of making the master plan now and I looked at the old master plan, that's not true. And so those decisions that you make are on that information. And so we need to ensure that those, you're fed the, the right information. And there needs to be communication between the city and the county. And I own property on the property line of that proposed change. I didn't receive any information from the, from the county. I received no letter and a neighbor told me about it. The city manager said he received information about it, but wasn't asked to comment on it. And, and so he didn't make any comment, but that property, there is no way the city could ever take care of it. You know, in generations, in their plan.
Yeah, Mr. Lauer, I wonder if, if staff said it was part of the annexation plan, not the master plan.
Well.
Possible?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but they show, you know, and they, and they put up the map with all these houses on it.
Yes.
In, in Richmond City with houses populated on all this land in the city limits.
Yes.
And I own that land, that's not gonna happen.
Right.
But it, but it's, it's almost like we're in a, in a development. You know, we're, are we county staffers or are we developers? You know, that's.
I, yeah, I could comment on that, but I don't know if now's the right time.
It's, it's probably not necessary, but, but no, I, I think, Mr. Lauer, I think, I think we hear what you're saying and I, I do. A cou- a couple of things you've mentioned though, I know are recommended that we do things. that we do things differently in the general plan. You know, the communication in particular between the county and the cities, the noticing, those kinds of things. I know I've read in here that we're striving to do a better job of those.
And so instead of sitting back and pouting, I want to be involved. And so...
Great.
That's why I'm here. I'm not here to complain, I'm here to, I want to...
A big thank you, because we advertised it was in the newspaper and everything, so thanks for coming in.
Yes, you're our one.
You're in.
We may ask you more questions. So, you know, I just, I wanted to say a few things. You know, I bought my first house in unincorporated Cache County in 1995, and in Young Ward, not College Ward, Young Ward. That's right, keep that straight. And, you know, I've been fortunate to be on the Planning Commission for fifteen some odd years now, and, you know, I saw the RU2 and RU5 zone get developed and come before us, and then, of course, I've lived through all of the applications and the decisions that we've made. And, you know, my take on how the commission has handled those is that I think, you know, we've made our mistakes, but I would say ninety percent of the time, we, or better, we make the right decision on those rezones. And, you know, just reflecting on the area I'm most familiar with, which is Young Ward, you know, there are, of course, massive parcels out there. There's, you know, ten, twenty, forty, and much larger type of parcels, and this is, happens throughout some of the more rural areas in the county. And if landowners, you know, want to split off and put a home on their property, or make some lots for their children or whatever, and they have enough land, they can do that, right? And, of course, we've seen a lot of speculators and developers come before us who have bought properties and want to rezone, because that's what they do, they're developers, right? But we also see a tremendous number of locals who live on improved county roads, who just want to make a lot or two for their family. And a lot of our decisions when we approve those zones are for those, and it continues the small-scale rural development along existing county infrastructure that is the right thing to do. The larger-scale subdivisions, I feel we've been fairly consistent, and tonight's another example, of turning those downs. There are a few that are larger in more rural areas that we've approved, and we've also seen where we've made some bad decisions. And, you know, we, it's like Jason was saying, you know, you put up the sign and folks start coming. So when, there's an aspect of the new general plan, it talks about rural community, you know, and if we look at the future land use map, we see some rural communities identified, you know, and you've got College Ward, this really tiny spot. And then you've got Benson, which takes up, you know, square miles all over the place. And I think about how big Young Ward is with its four hundred or so residences out there, it covers massive areas. Now, do I want to say that we should make all of that the rural community designation on a future land use plan, which says, you know, secondary land uses are residential uses at densities of less than one unit per ten acres, right? No, I don't, that's maybe counterproductive. But how do we find a way to still allow the continued, slow, incremental growth for our rural families, right? That's who we're here to represent, right? That's eight thousand people in the county. You know, we, our population is, that we serve, is very small. And, but the land is massive. And so what do we have, what tools are we going to have to take the place of RU2 and RU5? Because if I read this, I think we're, you know, the writing's on the wall, we're trying to get rid of this process, but, you know, how do we let, you know, the next generation of dogs, or the next generation of sands, or the next generation of Parkers, you know, to make a place for their children or family? You know, they're not developers, you know, that's different. And so I, overall, I kind of struggle with some of that. I'm not sure what the right answer is, but, you know, I consider places like Young Ward to be a rural community, and that there's going to be residential uses and densities of less than one unit per ten acres. In addition to the massive parcels that are out there in Young Ward, there's also a lot of five-acre lots and seven or eight-acre lots or whatever that are already on a county road. I own a five-acre lot, right? It's too small to get greenbelt, and it's too small to farm, right? But, you know, if I wanted to rezone it RU2, and I have two lots, you know, that I can give to my kids or something like that, you know, what's wrong with that? And so, you know, I think there is, there needs to be some mechanisms that will still allow for some of that to happen, but that is not, you know, promoting the speculators and the large developers to come out and buy the forty-acre parcel and rezone that RU2 for twenty lots, which I think, you know, we're not in a good position to support as a county and provide the proper services. And so, so, yeah, I'm trying to find where that opportunity is. And I think it can be in here, but I guess I'm sort of forecasting that, you know, the RU2 and RU5s do, in the right circumstances, serve a good purpose, right? When you're dealing with parcels that you can't really farm anymore, but that could, you know, be part of a bigger family series of parcels or whatever that can serve as places for kids to have, or the next generation to have a home or whatever. So that's my soapbox. I'm not, you know, there's nothing, I think, you know, what's in here, I'm fully supportive of. I'm just concerned that we don't have, you know, sort of this opportunity to continue some of the traditional, slow growth that has always happened in some of the rural areas of Cache County.
Thanks, Chris. A couple of things come to mind if I could share some thoughts and reaction to your comments. One is at the counter, the planning counter from the day-to-day side. Development staff, we have a lot of conversations with owners, and one of the things you mentioned is that those who are already along a public road and that service, that seems to be a kind of an easier game. But what we're finding is that those who live further away, and then they have to pay for those improvements, and in order to pay for those improvements, they're seeking more density opportunity.
Yeah.
And those are the conversations we have weekly, that some of them are very challenging conversations.
Yeah.
And because some of those road improvements are very substantial to get to the property they'd like to develop. And I think in that broader context, for example, one retiring farmer came to us and said, "I'd really love to develop my ground and subdivide it," but he would have to extend maybe a mile of road, and it was just cost prohibitive. I had a conversation with him and said, "Maybe some of your other neighbors want to come up with a larger master plan proposal. You can share the cost of the road, and maybe you can concentrate the development in one area and preserve some farm ground, and maybe that's a proposal after the general plan is adopted that you could explore. And it could take some time for the zoning code to catch or to be implemented for the general plan, but..." So I think that's very key, what you said, is what's accessible already to services versus extending those services and the cost of those services? And what's the growth pattern that results from extending those services? Go ahead.
I was just going to comment, do you feel, I really appreciate your comments, Chris, that the general plan takes the county in that direction to potentially get to that type of implementing those type of tools that would lead to? I guess that, you know, just making sure that we're headed in the right direction.
I think, I'm more wondering, I mean, I feel like we're turning away from those kinds of opportunities, and so I'm just wondering if, you know, for my neighbors in Young Ward or whatever, you know, what options are they going to have?
Right.
Are they going to have to, you know, find, you know, take a larger parcel or something like that?
And...
And make some subdivisions out of it.
Okay.
You know, make a subdivision out of it.
Okay.
Presently, some of the implementation options that are in there, and not saying they're, it could be tweaked and further explored, but there's everything from owners working together to do, like I mentioned, a larger master plan together. There is a fee in lieu of a transfer development right, where I want to upzone, I pay, development right, it goes into a pot of money that goes to buy sensitive lands within maybe a mile or two of where I live. That's cash out of pocket, but that's an investment in a lot that even after, you know, well and other expenses and so forth, and surveying that, there should still be some profit involved in that. And so looking for the balance in terms of equity, right, equitable treatment of property owners, but recognizing that some have more immediate development opportunity and access than others. And so those are some other ideas that are at least lightly touched on.
Yeah.
Cluster TDR, fee in lieu of TDR. But there are some areas that are designated as rural communities where it suggests that an RU2 and RU5 could be appropriate, where they already have that sense of, hey, we're kind of developing in that pattern already.
Yeah.
And so maybe that could be looked at in additional areas there.
There's one thing I have learned throughout this process, it feels like you can keep going and going and adding and adding, and it feel, you know what I mean? And it's a struggle to find an end. When do you get to the point where you've addressed, you know, every issue? And I will say, as a starting point, our old general plan went from, I think it's around like two hundred pages, and we've gotten down to the general plan now, it's just like forty-five pages. So it's a lot more, you know, readable, implemental. So that's something, I think, too, that's worth mentioning in terms of going forward, how helpful it is just to have this first step.
Yeah. I think it's excellent, and, you know, but I also understand it's an aspirational document, and when it comes down to it, it's the ordinances that implement the general plan, and, you know, we've got a long way to go.
Definitely.
To change a whole bunch of stuff.
Right.
You know, in that way, so...
Right. This is the first step.
Yeah, my comments are more like, I think, reflecting back over the number of years now, and I know some of the staff frustrations with RU2, RU5, and I think we've seen where people do try to abuse it, in my opinion. But I also see where it works actually very well.
Mm-hmm.
And it's in those rural areas where families are just trying to, you know, find a way to have their kids live next door to them, you know, instead of in a different town.
They're moving.
Yeah. So anyway, so I've got to, get off my soapbox. I think what we need to do, though, is probably close the public hearing, don't you guys think so?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I just have one observation on what you're talking about. I've noticed in Lewiston, where they have the sprinkler pivots on the corners where they can water.
Sure.
That's where they develop those ones.
Yeah.
And I think Lewiston, I could be wrong, but I think they still have, you've got to have ten acres to build a house.
You know, I don't know what they're setting.
Yeah, so you get to count that whole pivot field. It might be a hundred and sixty acres.
The boss said they can't, they can't water.
That's right.
That's where they're building the whole.
They do that and then turn the nine or whatever back to...
So we have a motion, how about a second?
Close it.
Okay. Motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. So what would you like to do, commissioners? You've got about three minutes.
Are you just looking for us tonight just to say that we're okay with what you've got?
Right, so it would either be a motion to, knowing that there'll be some, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, on maybe what I'm saying here with how to move it forward, but basically a motion to adopt with, I would say, revisions, knowing that we're going to be making some of those changes.
We're not adopting it, right?
Right, it's going to be a recommend, sorry if I, it's almost nine PM.
That's a quite of an amendment, because there was multiple areas where it referred to the three.
Right, and I think if it's that, just like kind of technical adding in, oh, we forgot to include Lewiston in this, that's not a substantive enough change to warrant an additional...
Oh, it won't hold it over then.
Right, right, right.
Be clarity and correctness edits. You could recommend approval, recommend approval to council of draft plan with noting any clarity and correctness edits to the plans, and as noted during the discussion. If there are more substant, substantive changes, such as changing the land use map with more rural communities, and you were to mention those, and you knew what those were, you could forward a recommendation with that modification to the draft plan. You also have the option to encourage further study of certain aspects and bring it back to you either in special meeting or next month. So you have all of those options.
Was the information, I found it very interesting, some of that information you was going over, but in my haste, I couldn't find it in here.
Yeah, that's, I think what we're recommending is that the general plan itself, and from our perspective, the regional collaboration plan are in a final draft state, and we're ready for moving on to council, whereas the cost of services plan needs more work.
Because that, you was going through those graphs, we didn't have, right?
You didn't have those, that's right. So we think that you could move forward, general plan, regional collaboration plan, if you felt ready to. Regional collabor, or the...
RAA.
Yeah, the assessment and cost service plan is getting there, but it's not quite there. But if, nothing in it would conflict, it only serves to support those other two plans.
Does anybody have, commissioners, does anybody have any major concerns with components of the general plan as presented?
Not really, where it's more advisory, and when we get to the zoning changes, we're going to make the real substantive...
Yeah.
...changes down the road, which hopefully we can make sometime over the next short period, so we don't keep telling people, "Well, wait till we approve the general plan and we can do that."
Right.
Now it's going to be, "Well, wait till we make the zoning change."
Just going to keep my...
We can push some of these people off for years if we don't. So hopefully the next step we can make will be with some of those things.
Right.
Well, let me ask you first to make a motion to extend our meeting, maybe another half an hour, if somebody would be willing.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to nine thirty.
For a second. Okay, motion in a second to extend the meeting to nine thirty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so, yeah, you know, I can't make a motion, but I would certainly feel comfortable moving the general plan along. I think the other documents, I wouldn't mind being able to, one which we haven't seen yet, wouldn't mind spending a little bit more time on those. But what it really comes down to is what the commissioners would like to do. So if you feel comfortable with the two documents, then I would suggest making a motion to recommend both of them, but if it's just the general plan, we can do that, so. Thoughts?
I'm comfortable with both, with the regional collaboration as well, the general plan and the regional collaboration, but I'm finding to wait, but I feel good about the two.
Right, and I got your edits this morning, I didn't have time to include those, so I'll incorporate those as well.
Yeah, and those are just minor little things.
Right, those revisions, right.
What do you think, Lane?
I'm ready to make a motion to recommend to the county...
I'm ready to make a motion to recommend to the council approval of the general plan in its draft state, and the regional collaboration plan with the, do you call them amendments or additional, to be drafted, or come to more complete draft.
Yeah, and any clarity and
Any clarity.
Clarity and correctness.
Clarity and correctness that may be coming along the way. Kind of vague, but then the general plan is big.
So we have a motion, Brady, is that gonna be, you're okay with that?
And to be clear, that's for the general plan and the regional collaboration plan. Okay, perfect, just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so.
I'll give this back to Richard. He's not gonna like that, that you recorded what he said.
So I have Parker motion to request an approval to the county council for the county general plan and the regional collaboration plan. Any edits were there being corrected, so we did.
That would cover it.
So yeah, this is a recommendation.
Yes.
Okay, just making sure on that. Okay, so we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you staff for your patience and hard work and all of that stuff.
Thank you. It's exciting.
You've put a lot of time into this.
Yeah, thanks for coming out and being our, our primary public.
I thought it would be full.
It should be full.
It should be, people don't appreciate how important these things are, so.
But then when we make decisions based on it, then they're mad, that we didn't tell them that it was changed this way, or whatever.
It changed earlier, I'm sorry, you're in a tough, tough work.
Thank you, and we're underpaid. I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing.
Oh, never mind. Carry on.
Okay, so next item is a public hearing on amending section 1707030, use-related definitions. Would you like to cover that tonight?
Sure.
Seems like someone here for the public hearing.
All right, well, I'll try to be brief in the refresher here, and
Yeah, this isn't our first time, this is not our first reading, right?
That's right.
Yeah, good.
Not sure if this is another adjustment to this play. Okay. So I'll just recap some of the discussion and the options before you, for amending use definition 4100, recreation facility. You see before you that was outlined as one of the options, option one in the staff report, was just to remove, to make it clear that a recreation facility does not include use type 4110 campground, and this hearing has been noticed such that really anything in Title 17 could be amended, but including specifically a definition of 4110, a new definition of campground, which states that any area with two or more campsites, and I'll note that it could be FR40 or RR zones, or also commercial, that was some discussion from last time, that are approved for the occupancy by transient using recreational vehicles, motorhomes, mobile trailers or tents for dwelling, lodging, or sleeping purposes with a duration of, it's supposed to say stay, for a period of 30 days or less. Water and sewage facilities shall comply with state requirements, and that refers to that section of code where state requirements are noted as applicable to development. Some of the discussion from last meeting was whether it should only be conditionally allowed in FR40 resort recreation, or also in commercial. Some of the perspective that I might just share is that the general plan really only identifies two existing commercial nodes, and if the intent of those commercial areas is to provide services and capture retail opportunities, it's more job oriented, then maybe a recreation campground is, is less compatible in those commercial areas. The general plan really doesn't, I should say, the draft general plan, doesn't necessarily anticipate expanding those commercial areas, it's more of a, considered to be municipalities. So I just point that out as maybe part of the, the discussion as to whether commercial remains as drafted here with not allowed, or if it's conditionally allowed.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Tim, I mean, the general plan though, it doesn't show where all the existing commercial properties are at. And, you know, there's some scattered stuff across the county that's zoned commercial. And then there's also concentrations, like if you think between Hiram and Nibley, there's quite an industrial, commercial concentration out there. I think, from my perspective anyway, when I was discussing, you know, why wouldn't it be conditional on commercial zone, that, it's a step that somebody could take if they wanted, you know, in, in, in the valley area, if they wanted to put in an RV campground, they would go through the process of rezoning a parcel first to, to commercial before they would be able to have the opportunity to do that, and there could be places in the county that would be suitable for that sort of use. And, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be commercial in next to a city or something like that, it could be a commercial lot out in more rural area, so we, we do have commercial areas out in the rural area, you know, commercial parcels out in the rural areas that have uses on them that, you know, folks have decided don't work as well, you know, next to residential areas or whatever, so. But that's my context on making the commercial zone a conditional part of it. It's, it's an extra hoop for somebody to jump through that doesn't exist now, certainly.
It was really interesting, since we've been having this discussion, I, I wasn't even looking for it, but I come across a conversation just this week where a family, that's a prominent family from the valley, they reside in a couple of communities, or they have family members in a couple of communities in the north end of the valley. They had a daughter that come from Alaska, brought her kids down, they were just trying to do some schooling, and I don't know, there were some other things involved, but they brought a camper. And the mom had a tattoo on her arm, and so the one on 1700 South wouldn't let her in there because of the tattoo. And the one behind the Quality Inn was full. So they were bounced back and forth, and then they finally ended up residing in the basement of one of the family members, because they literally had nowhere to park their trailer. And they finally ended up going back to Alaska, not that we, I present that as a problem, but I just, I couldn't believe that I encountered that discussion this week when we're kind of going over this, so how many other people out there are trying to find a place to temporarily stay or whatever else, and there is no place?
I think if you drive around the valley and see how many campers are in people's driveways or, or in Logan City, they move them once a week around Logan because there is no place, is there's?
Well, there's quite a few of them.
I would hear say there's hundreds in the valley that are looking for a place to park a camper.
No doubt.
One guy makes his round around the Tabernacle, he moves his camper and truck once a week, so Logan doesn't tow him, but.
Yeah, and I, 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 just because I've heard Jason say it multiple times, you know, he, his concern was, and I share it, it's like, is this kind of a, are we having a knee jerk reaction because there was a bunch of public clamor over one issue, you know, one, one particular project, you know, and, and now we're pulling that option from the entire valley, you know, and saying, and saying that those uses only belong up in the mountains. That's what this does.
At this point in time economically, it's even a bigger issue.
There are two other options that were explored, and one is this kind of one-off per parcel opportunity for kind of an agritourism amendment is perhaps a way to diversify and kind of disperse this into less concentrated sort of way, and a less kind of generally impactful way. The other idea was to explore a overlay zone that could meet certain criteria and then demonstrate that it's compatible and maybe achieve an overlay zone, so those are options. I think the primary concern with, from my perspective, and then I'll, I'll let you make your decision, but it's just that are commercial areas for that recreation use, or are they to generate retail of services to surrounding residential areas and the communities? Or are they, should they fill up in the short term with a recreational use, rather than reserved for longer-term commercial prospects, so that's, that's the thought there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I think of like, I mean, you're familiar with Hyde Park and what we're trying to do with that town center, you know, and have it more of a walkable community. Yeah, I'm not sure that an RV campground is what, you know, we would want right there, and I know that our city doesn't apply to that, but.
But you might want a three-story hotel or a four-story hotel there.
Yeah.
To accommodate guests.
So you talk about two sleeping areas, when we were talking about yurts and everything else, we defined how many could be in a sleeping area. There were four in a room, or whatever else, that there was a limit. I mean, you talk about RVs, we're throwing 13 people in a camper or whatever else, you've got to put a limit on what sleeping areas are, or a definition of that. And I understand, and that's why there is an address of the housing area, but you've also got to look at the transitorial unit or aspect of having campgrounds or RVs, and that's when you say knee jerk reaction, that's because there was only one that's going on right now, and that caused the big issue, so. The knee jerk was because, are you kidding me, this was allowed in an A-10? And the size, and we didn't have anything as far as septic tanks and everything else. So we've got to look at all of those things when we're talking about this. Certainly we'll be look atting, I hope, so we can say, okay, do we put a number? Do we have septic tanks, where do we go, all of those different things. You got the knee jerk reaction on the Holyoke Airport, I mean, I got people calling me right now saying, there's no flipping way airports should be in certain areas, so you got airports, you got RVs, you got campgrounds.
You got homes.
You got homes, but.
There's a lot of homes anywhere in some places, so.
Okay, we just talked about density, so if you bring in a RV or, or campground, and you talked about density, you you, you see that all over Utah, as far as what's being allowed, I mean, you go down into California, the density, you've got to look at those things.
Could it, if you made that a conditional use in the commercial zone, then someone could, let's say even on that Smithfield one, he could apply for a rezone to a commercial zone with the intent of putting in a campground.
But on a rezone, you get to listen to public clamor, on a CUP, you don't, and so that's where the citizens had a problem about that. They really didn't have a voice once that was put in as a CUP in an agricultural area.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's why I'm personally more comfortable with making it conditional under commercial, because it's that extra step.
And I agree, because then you get to listen to the citizens.
Then you get to listen, if it's up by Smithfield, we're gonna fill the room, if it's out in Avon, maybe not.
The humaner from Benson, that was awesome. You know, we, we had the opportunity to hear the people, we made the decision and then moved forward. But it's the study process, and if commercial would allow that, I, I just don't know what the county thinks, I mean, it's too bad the lard left, because, I mean, if we don't want it in our valley, I guess we'll have to go somewhere else. But right now, it's kind of sad that if somebody comes here and wants to stay in a camper, they're limited to two places.
It is sad.
Unless they're coming for an event at the fairgrounds, then they can stay there.
That, that's true.
But if not, they can, because a lot of, their people stop there every day just about wanting to camp, but unless you're there for an event you're tied to, you can't get a camping spot. At least, usually they'll tell them no, sometimes if Bart's not there, Bart will say, yeah, you can stay one night, but but I, I think that's something the county can look at, is developing part of that. Maybe the county could develop something there, because they then could hook into the city sewer and water, meet all the conditions, and there could be a county accessible campground that could be used.
That's a great, that would be a great location for an RV campground.
And the county would make tons of money.
Yeah, yeah, the county would make tens of thousands of dollars off that, but that's beside the point. Yeah, maybe a good place for the county to look at, because the, the facilities are already there for it. Because I think there is a need, and yeah, I don't know how we address it, but I think that the commercial with the conditional use still makes it available in the county, that's just a hoop to get through, and there's a good chance the commercial rezone's not gonna be approved unless it's in the right area.
Yeah.
I, I like that route better too than just saying it's only in
The mountains.
The mountains, or, or recreation.
I think what that does.
Yeah.
Well, then the mountains, the mountains are closer to Mount, because they're not clean after themselves.
And, you know, I'm, I'm very supportive of, you know, the smaller scale options that are being considered, you know, for in the A-10 zone, you know, for one or two, whatever it is, you know.
It can only be one, can't it? Didn't we decide the campground is two or more?
Could be on a parcel, a residential parcel, and then there could be an overlay zone that's explored in the future.
I think that would be good too.
Again, it's just, would a commercial area, the remainder of the area out where the Valley View Storage CUP is, would that just fill up with a rec facility, and then there's no more space for retail, when retail is more ripe in the future?
I think, I think when retail becomes more ripe, that ground will transition from, because it's not a ton of infrastructure, right? If it becomes relevant to have a, a different business there that is more profitable in the future, you know, you, you look at what happened between the Dodge dealership, right, they had the trailer park there north of them while they were doing, I think it was Ruby Pipeline, right?
Yeah.
That went away, and now it's being developed, because something better
The next best use.
There's not a lot of infrastructure to take out if you've got a camping.
I, I think there's possibly things there.
I don't think, I don't think many will happen either, but.
We've learned there's substantial infrastructure from state requirements.
Well, substantial, substantial in our minds, but in a, in a development mind of a, a big commercial development, they're not very substantial.
I think there's possibly things that happened there in that North Logan development that we're unaware of, but even that location, I mean, that, that would have been a great location if it was, because it was already in a commercial setting, it wasn't inflicted on a neighborhood residential area.
Had some access problems that
Access in and out, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, great discussion. Are, go ahead, Tim, I think you, you were still, yeah, you've, you've covered everything you want to?
Everything.
So you're looking for action though, right? And I would ask what the commission would like to do, I guess we need to open a public hearing in this regard, so maybe we should do that first.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we'd open a public hearing to discuss the use-related definitions, 4100 recreational facility and other potential there in existing rating definitions.
Okay.
Three dots after that.
You guys can fight over who got the second.
Give that one to Parker.
Lane got it, so, okay, we have a motion and second to
You know, those auctioneers, they'll get you quick.
To open the public hearing, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, is anyone here would like to talk about amending section 1707030, use-related definitions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to close the public hearing.
I'm, I'm thinking about it, I haven't seen anything all night.
You have to wait till we close the public hearing, and then you can get upset with us. Because, so we did have a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so we did our due diligence, now what would you like to do on this?
Well, I think if we, if we change that from the commercial zone to, or I mean, to be in it, to be allowed in a commercial zone.
As a conditional use.
Conditional.
I agree with that.
I like that idea too.
Yeah.
What about you, Brady?
I'm good, yeah.
Melinda?
Yes.
Wow.
Retain all other recreation uses under the A-10 standard, just the campground that we're taking out.
Yeah. I think that makes sense.
Can I ask a definition of campground, is that all encompassing? How far is camp, I mean?
Right there.
Yes, but RVs, anything else, it's can be dreamed of there.
Recreational vehicles, motorhomes, mobile trailers, or tents for dwelling, lodging, or sleeping.
A yurt is a tent.
Yurt would be a tent.
A yurt would be in there.
A tiny home would be a camper, it's on a trailer.
The Conestoga Glamping would also be that, my opinion.
If you, if you really wanna pull that one around, so. If you can get that one across the canyon without it coming apart.
Sheep camp, same thing.
Yeah, it would fit, yeah, I think all those would fit under there.
It's essentially our general definition becoming a use type definition. It's essentially our general definition becoming a use-type definition with a little more specificity on the zones that it applies to.
So, and I think if we're going to entertain a motion, it's going to be, is it going to be a recommendation, then? I think it would be to the county council, so if someone would like to do that.
I'll make it, but I don't want to repeat it because I might get it wrong again.
I, I might just suggest it's generally to amend the recreation facility definition forty-one hundred, to not include use type, the proposed use type forty-one ten campground, and then to create a new use type forty-one ten campground. And then striking the definition of campground from the general definition to create a use type forty-one ten, and then amending table seventeen oh nine thirty.
That's what I said.
And she's got it.
Conditional allowed in FR forty, resort, recreation, and commercial.
For commercial, yeah. And I don't know if you want to add something in there about overlays, or just leave that out for now.
That's a future discussion, don't you? Yeah. Who would like to second that motion?
I will.
Okay, Melinda seconded. We have a motion in a second. So noted. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? So the recommendation goes to the county council. Okay, we got some discussion items. Can these go pretty quickly?
Number nine, Cherry Peak Skier Area CUP Fourth Amendment. They're still working on it, but they had a concert.
Okay.
Which was approved as a special event.
Okay, good to know.
I think that's all we need to discuss.
Unless you'd like to extend another half hour.
So they'll be, they'll be coming forward somewhere down the road, maybe?
It should be, yes.
Well, Angie, just quick review on that. So wasn't he good up to, he just had to get permission each time, and he was good up to, was it three thousand? But he was trying to get it so he could exceed six thousand and not have to come in, or what?
No, the CUP currently is a thousand max.
Oh.
And so he was looking to up it to, I think, four thousand or five.
But he still had to get permission each time, and he was looking to up it and then not have to each time.
Yeah.
Primary.
And, and to do, and to do, to allow for a larger crowd, it's a CUP amendment, and he's going to have to address parking issues and traffic and all that stuff, right? That's kind of the main things.
Yeah, so we're still working on that with the consultant, the third-party consultant. I think his plans up to a reasonable.
Where they need to be. Okay. Great. And they can still do, well, I guess they can. They probably don't have enough acres to do a recreation resort. I've always felt like they should just do that, you know? And maybe that's one of these questions on revising the resort recreation zone.
Because is that a forty-eight year old?
It's, it's talked about in the general plan, you know. It's such a massive requirement. It's like two thousand acres.
Two thousand?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
You're suggesting maybe a smaller version of that?
I would think so. I mean, just because, you know, not every resort recreation zone is a ski area, you know? And even, does, does Beaver Mountain even have two thousand acres?
Ski resort even?
I can't imagine.
Kind of written with Powder Mountain area in mind, I believe.
It was. No, that's exactly, exactly right.
I will say, I did get a call the other day from a developer talking about water, looking at doing another, similar to Powder Mountain, but on the Cache County side, there's south of Avon. So there is talk of, one may be coming before us in the next.
There's, there's a lot of land down there.
It sounds sooner than that, but yeah, they're actively pursuing it.
Anyway.
Okay.
Anything else, staff?
On that item or the final discussion item?
Any, anything.
I'll just briefly touch on the mislabeled slide here.
We can do the floodplain setback, or is that one?
So this is the revisit of the application to amend use-related definition site grading. And just briefly, that the definition states that this is for excavation or filling, or a combination thereof, to basically prepare the construction of a building. But does not include normal cultivation associated with an agricultural operation. So every zone in our use table is listed as the zoning clearance required for site grading. Then excavation shall be less than one thousand five hundred cubic yards per parcel. And I'll just share a little more of the, the background. So what we've seen is the potential for some workaround with mining and excavation. And under the, the umbrella, the attempted definition of site grading. And so that's kind of depicted here in this diagram, is that if multiple parcels are created and there's an attempt to do fifteen hundred cubic yards for each parcel, then what do we need to do to make sure that this site grading is not used in the inappropriate way? So that's kind of the, the purpose and intent of this. This is just a diagram, or a table, rather, showing how much cubic, excuse me, how much fifteen hundred cubic feet is in terms of the depth based on the area of land? So if we're five thousand square feet, then it's eight feet of depth. If we're a full acre, then it's just under a foot of excavation and.
Was your picture from Smithfield Canyon?
So, anyway, just framing up that we need to keep talking about this and perhaps explore how the ordinance could be further clarified in terms of what its intent is.
Have you, have you also, and this is probably going different, but when we had the application, when we were talking about road and grading and the steepness, are we talking about, are we addressing that as well?
So I think this is intended more for a site.
I understand, but I'm saying in addition, if we're talking about this, we should be talking about that as well.
Okay, we certainly could, and there, there could be an amendment to further clarify that the interpretation, current interpretation.
Ooh, now Matt gets to say something.
He's coming up.
But. Legal and.
One minute.
Interim director, and we, we had a discussion as staff and concluded that John Luthy's interpretation that a, a public facility is exempt from that steep slope, it, it, it's an exception to the steep slope requirement. A private road could not be developed on thirty percent plus slopes, but a public road facility could in utilities. So that's our current understanding of that.
So a private homeowner couldn't do anything?
Not without a public road.
And the private cannot build on the steep road?
That's the way the code currently read and interpreted, interpreted, interpreted. I can't speak either now, but.
Did you have something, Matt?
If they develop a public road, they could build homes in subdivision. Go ahead, Matt.
I just want to point out, in this one, it gives us trouble from the engineering department because this definition says, in preparation for the construction of a building. So if we have someone out there doing site grading for any reason, and they don't plan on building a building, they just want to move their hill, they want to move their mountain, they just want to put a whole bunch of fill on their land for whatever reason, then this definition does not apply. You have to be doing all this grading in preparation for a building.
But that instance, they kept saying they were going to build a building, but they had to keep going down, and so we're sitting there saying, what the flip?
So just, just so that if, if we want to.
If there is going to be a building, there ought to be a point where it's off the path and moved.
If we want to make someone get a zoning clearance for just putting a whole bunch of fill on their land, or doing some kind of grading, or moving their hills or mountains, they can do that without a zoning clearance. Because this only says that you need a zoning clearance for the site grading if you're doing it for a building.
Thank you, Matt.
But is there further clarification on that, too? Because I thought you were representing it per acre, but it's per parcel, right?
Yeah, and I was just demonstrating how much.
Oh, okay.
The depth of excavation for fifteen hundred cubic feet, just a reference.
Angie, what do we have to look forward to on our next agenda?
Well, officially, per the application deadline, I just have two subdivision applications.
Wow.
Are you twos?
No, actually, I think there might just be amendments, too.
Okay, so consent items, it sounds like. Wow, two consent items. Gosh, we might actually get to some discussion items then, Tim.
Are we not doing the floodplain?
Yeah, dig in. Ready?
Did we, did we intentionally jump the floodplain then and talk about it next time, or did we talk about it?
Yeah, we're not prepared. Good.
There was no intention about it, so.
All right, anything else, commissioners? Okay, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you all for your patience and stamina.
Alan, invite somebody.